Having to be on the whole.
All right, so it is 5:30 on June 15th, and I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Dr. Erickson is running a little bit late, so he'll be joining us. But we'll go ahead and get started since we have four hours five minutes here. At the end of the evening, will everyone please rise and join me in this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda, 2.01, is the adoption of the agenda. Tonight's special meeting has only one primary purpose, which is to interview three of the search firms that have applied to help us find an ex-permanent superintendent. I would like to make a change in the agenda for consideration. We've had two, what I consider expert opinions on. Discuss the presentation. One is that we're certainly okay to do so, the other is that that's not part of the Open Public Meetings Act. So we're going to err on the side of that it's not part of the Open Public Meetings Act, and so we will not have an executive session tonight. That there is a change. All our discussions will be during this meeting. So with that understood, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Well, I'd need to accept the agenda with the elimination of the executive sessions.
It's been moved that we accept the agenda with the elimination of the executive session. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion. So before we get into the agenda, I wanted to ask Linda to introduce us to our newest member, to the newest member of our team. I think he just started working yesterday, so.
And I think actually Jackson has come around and introduced himself to some of you. Jackson, would you want to stand up? This is Jackson Hogan. Jackson was officially became part of the Ferndale School District staff yesterday. So we're getting in broken fast with a long day today. Jackson will be the assistant to the superintendent, the assistant, the recording secretary for the school board, and part of our communications team. He'll be replacing Kelly, although they are going to work together on a transition for a couple of months. Kelly, as you know, has taken a position in as our, as our count payable person. So she's moved over one cubicle, but she will still be, like I said, assisting with this transition. Jackson is a representative of a university place, Curtis High School, has a degree in journalism from Pepperdine University, and has most recently been working as an education recorder. And so we interviewed lots of candidates, and we all agreed Jackson was the right fit for Ferndale. So you'll get to know him more in the weeks to come.
Oh, welcome, Jackson. We look forward to working.
I'm working with you guys too.
Glad you chose Ferndale. Next, our only item on our agenda is to interview the consultant candidates to provide us. So as you know, I would have John published a request for proposals last month. Several weeks, we got three proposals, and we accepted all three. So those are the proposals that have been provided to you for review. And then tonight, after our brief discussion here, we'll start in and have a series of presentations by each of your three firms. Once we've completed these interviews, we will have some time for discussion, and then hopefully make a decision about which search firm we would like to have help us with our work. So as I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned this or not, but we all got a list of questions to consider for tonight's presentations. That's not a defined list. You're certainly free to ask any questions. This is just sort of a point of reference for some questions that we might want to ask. We're not going to do like we've done in the past where we each ask the same question each time. Rather, you can look at the questions and feel free to ask anything on this page or any other question that comes to mind. Any questions on that?
Will admin team also be asking questions?
Just getting to that. So I've asked the admin team to join us tonight because searching for the new superintendent has such a tremendous impact on their work of the district and their day-to-day jobs. And so I've also extended them an invitation to also ask questions. I think they have a perspective that's a little different than ours, and it's one that's necessary in our selection process. So they'll be fully participating in this process tonight. Other questions about the process?
Regarding the interview questions that you asked, I think our, when Andrew and I talked, I think the thinking was, you know, when we interview the student, we all ask the same question to be fair. But in this case, your questions are going to be based on the presentations made by the search firm, and they might be quite different. So they, they might present different kinds of information and leave different questions in your mind, or you might have follow-ups on certain things that they say. So that's why I think the questions that Andrew and John sent were just meant as per your thinking, not, not a.
And some of them are fancy.
Yes. So, and yeah.
And you can feel free to ask them to expand on anything that was in the packet. Really is our chance to get to know the firms as best as we can and make an informed decision after.
And the three presentations scheduled that?
5:45, 6:45, and 7:45.
So we have about six or seven minutes.
About a 20-minute presentation, then figured about 25 minutes of to 30 minutes of questions. I'd give you a time to miss after each one if you wanted, or just scratch a little bit. It's going to be a long night, so.
All right, so we have about five minutes before the first presentation. There's any other items or anything related to this that we'd like to discuss?
Yeah, so did you, questions for everyone? Or just the four?
I was told to print them for the board.
Okay. Maybe we could get some of the executives as well, since they're going to.
Let's make a, let's make some copies. If one of you guys wants to hand me yours. Are you sure? Sorry about that.
I love this, how do you structure a total compensation offer? Because I think superintendent's salary is always a hot topic in a community, and to hear from these guys how that is structured and decided upon is.
Yeah, I agree. I'm also interested in stakeholders and how I like interview. So during the pandemic, not during the pandemic. There will be this time in the winter when we're doing this.
Also, when I read the first one, and they got their part, it doesn't work out. Come back and they'll do it again for you. And this is great. And then the other two said this is a thing. Okay, so that's just under practice.
But it's fully.
Pardon?
Hopefully it works out.
We should ask them how many times they have to give their guarantee.
Somebody was to discuss that.
One of them talked about it.
And the one that. The same district, two years in a row. I was looking through the longevity list, and did people use them again?
And there were numbers that did, with more than two.
Ray and Associates.
I think we talked about this a bit in the past, but there are so many openings in our ESD that we were a little surprised. We only got three responses, but we took one for a stretch period. And then almost a third of the superintendent seats are turning open in our ESD. Will be interesting. For one has similar people applying.
Most of them are out this year.
One of the groups.
Lindon has used Lindon.
All right, we're just about ready to go, so.
We have Mr. Porto and BWP Associates.
Well, our first presentation. I'm sorry, BWP. So are you guys ready?
We are.
All right, well, we'd love to hear from you.
Great. I'm not seeing myself, so let me see if I can. Can you guys see me okay?
Yes.
We can see the PowerPoint, but we can't see you.
When I press start video, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. Is there anything I can be doing to correct that?
We are working on that right now.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just wait for you.
So can you see us?
I can see you, yes.
Okay, well, why don't we just go around the room and we'll do just very quick introductions?
Okay.
So Mark D. Monster.
Hi, Mark D. Box, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services.
I'm John Fairbrun, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Leanne Riddle, School Director.
Melinda Coles, School Director.
Kevin Erickson, School Director.
Andrew McLaurin, School Director.
Linda Quinn, Superintendent.
Jessica D. Robb.
My name is Tom. I'm just the school representative of this.
My name's Kelly Larity, and I'm Kelly Larity, and I'm one of the executive directors of Teaching and Learning.
And I'm Fabriz, and I'm the other executive director of Teaching and Learning.
Nice to meet everybody. I'm raring to go, but it's a little awkward without your getting a visual of me. But we'll play this however, if you'd like me to just start or re, if I should come in again and try it from scratch. I don't know what, what exactly you think we should do.
We can give Kelly another few minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We can extend, but we'll look at you next.
Okay. I dressed up in everything for you.
Sure.
Even put pants on, come on.
Mr. Porto, would you mind rejoining the Zoom?
Sure, so let me, I'll leave and we'll come back. My assistant Cam is also with me. She's under the banner BWP and Associates that you see. We'll both go off and come back on again.
Thank you.
Okay, leaving now, Joe.
Okay. Well, I'm back. But I'm still getting the same message. The message alert says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Kelly, does he have to be a co-host to have video too?
Normally for our, he's a panelist, so.
Oh, there's an option, ask to start video. Do you have that option?
Oh, I hope I can start video right there.
So yes, thanks to us.
Hey, there. Now, clearly it was worth the wait, correct? Also, Kelly, I think you need to invite Cam to join us again. She's not able to get on now. There we go. Are you guys ready? Can I get going?
Yes.
All right, thanks. My name is Joe Porto, and I'm here representing BWP and Associates. My assistant Cam is behind the scenes, and she's running the PowerPoint for me. We were going to have be also joined by my partner, Steve Gerlach, who, sorry, Steve Griesbach, who has had a family emergency today, unfortunately. His elderly mother had a medical issue that he had to attend to this afternoon. Everything is fine and all will be well, but Steve was unable to join me. If we were fortunate enough to get the search, it would be Steve and I conducting the search. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Steve and I would very much like to do this search for you. We are a great team. We do a really nice job, and we have a wonderful record of success. And we would like to do a brief PowerPoint for our chance during this 40 minutes or so to present. I know we have about 20 minutes, and then you'll ask questions. So we wanted to take you through just a brief PowerPoint to give you an idea of our process, what we can do for you, and what makes us special. So Cam, if you'd like to get the first slide going, we figured that you would have some questions for us. So we designed this PowerPoint to answer these six questions. You probably want to know a little bit about us. Who are the consultants you would work with in the search? What are the steps of the process? How long is this going to take? What will the calendar look like? Of course, how much will it cost? And how do we know it's going to be successful? Or another way to say that is, why should we select you among the people we've brought in? So we're hoping that we answer those six questions in the next 20 minutes. And if you don't see your particular question up there, make sure you jot it down, and we'll take the time to answer anything else that's on your mind that we might not cover here. Cam? So BWP and Associates, if you haven't heard of us, we are a national firm. Our roots go way back to the 1970s. We are a national firm, but we're kind of home-based in Illinois. We have conducted over 800 searches. We have 10 directors. We used to call them partners. Now we call them directors, and 40 associates spread out throughout the country. One of the things we'd like you to keep in mind as I go through the process here is, you know, the best predictor of success in the future is past success. And we've had a remarkable run. We have 99% of our placements finish their first contracts. 95% of our placements are offered a second contract. No one has ever been dismissed for malfeasance. We've never been sued. We've never had anything uncomfortable or embarrassing arise about a candidate, you know, through social media. If you go with us, you're going to have a successful process. Little bit about us. I'll start with myself. I'm a retired school superintendent. I was superintendent in two different school districts in Illinois. My total experience as a superintendent was 16 years. I retired in 2011 after a 33-year career. And since then, I've been busy. I've been a professor at Loyola University in Chicago, as well as Northern Illinois University in DeKalb, Illinois. I've been a consultant. I have my own company that I do strategic planning facilitation. I've done a lot of mentoring. I've even been an interim superintendent. The personal side, I have two great, two children, grandchildren, and another one on the way. Love to do boating. Boy, would I love to get out to your area of the country. And my passion and my hobby is being an expert on the Beatles. Steve, when you get to meet him, he's also a retired superintendent. Like I have been doing, he's been a consultant. He's written a book and some articles, and has also, in fact, currently he's an interim superintendent. And he's athletic. He likes to get outside, and he forgets how old he is because he's still snowboarding for some reason. And he calls himself a foodie. So we just wanted to let you know who you'd be dealing with, because most of this, you're going to find out that the processes are very similar among companies. It's who you feel the most comfortable with and who you have the most trust and faith in. So we wanted to let a little bit of our personality shine through. Cam, let's take them through the process. We have several phases, and if we were fortunate enough to get the search, the first phase is a planning meeting with all of you. By the way, we have done searches now for the last year and a half totally with COVID protocols, and they've been as successful as our, you know, traditional searches. And we can put together any kind of search you want. If you two are still being cautious with COVID and, you know, don't want to have a search where you're bringing in people, we can do the whole thing through video, or we can do a merge of the two, some sort of blending. So the first thing we would do is have a meeting with you, whether it be live in person or Zoom, and we'd ask you about the kind of search you're looking for. You see the word customizing up at the top there. That's what this phase is all about. We don't just have one cookie cutter model. We have a basic model. But we take a lot of pride in being able to streamline it, customize it, and tailor it for Ferndale's needs. We'd ask you what kind of stakeholder involvement you want, what your expectations are there. We'd share information about how we're going to market this plan. Communication is the absolute key for a successful search. So we'll figure out together who's going to be point people, how we're going to communicate back and forth. And then we'll be asking you if you could give us a range for what you're thinking for compensation, because that's often a very important factor as we're talking to candidates. So that meeting is very important, sets the stage. But phase two, the next slide, is the slide that I personally have the most passion about, and I think it's the absolute key to a good search. What makes us different than maybe what a school board association search, or, you know, somebody who just generically does searches would be is we don't just post the opening and then cross our fingers and hope the right people apply. We really want to tailor this search to find exactly the leader that you're looking for. And the way to do that is to start out by creating a leadership profile. And we're going to get input from all your key stakeholders, and we're going to develop maybe an eight to 10 bullet point profile of exactly. of exactly what you're looking for. And if you think it's just going to end up being a cookie cutter, you know, good communication skills, personable. There are some things that show up on most profiles, but every district has unique needs. So we'll launch phase two by starting out with one to one interviews with each of you. And we basically throughout this process ask three things. We keep it simple. What about Ferndale are you most proud of? You'd like to see continue. What about Ferndale do you think is open for improvement? And then finally, what are the key characteristics you're looking for in a superintendent? We ask those three questions during personal interviews with each of you. Then we'll have another day where if you want us to come out, we'll actually come out to the district and we'll bring a small team with us. And we will meet with focus groups. We'll meet with school and community leaders, teachers, non-teaching staff. We like to meet with the students. We will meet with PTA leaders. Whoever you help us identify that you want to have a voice, we'll have a focus group meeting with and we'll ask those same three questions all the while, taking really good notes and looking for things that are merging as trends. We can do focus groups onsite or we could do focus groups virtually. We have found that it works great both ways. Then to make sure no person in your community who wants to be involved feels left out, we'll also, we have designed a survey, basically again, asking those three questions with a little more specificity. And we'll work with your tech person to get that on your website. And through your communication vehicles, you can let community members, teachers, parents, students, everyone you want to do that survey. We take the results of our notes. We synthesize it into one profile. And I can't stress this enough, that leadership profile then becomes the driving force of everything. It's what we look for when we're looking through the paper applications. It's what we look for when we design our initial interview questions. It's the evaluation tool that we use when we want to evaluate candidates. We'll work with you to develop your questions for interviewing and your methods for analyzing the candidates. And it all comes back to the leadership profile. So this is a very important process and it's a theme you will see running through all the steps. Next, next one, please. We then launch into recruitment. We attack from all angles. We will have advertisements mainly in key superintendent organizations. There's the National AASA. There's your Washington Association of School Administrators. Sometimes we advertise in some of the minority educators' journals and organizations. But the second bullet is key as well. As I said, we don't just put up an announcement and hope the right people apply. We have an elaborate network of contacts and people throughout the country. And once we have your profile, we'll go out and ask our networking people, who do you know in this area that matches this that we can then reach out to? So our recruitment is a combination of advertising and us personally networking and recruiting to be proactive. We don't wait around for good candidates to apply. The next part of this same phase then is our job. We have an online application at the BWP website. We look at all of those applications. We bring in, there's no magic number, maybe 18 to 20 people for an initial interview. We'll use the profile, the leadership profile to analyze those. We'll do background research. We have a company that we use that delves deep into candidate's social networking profiles. And therefore you can feel really good about any candidate that we end up bringing to you. In phase four, board gets involved again. This is a very important meeting. We do two things. We bring you a slate of candidates that we feel best match the leadership profile. Again, no magic number. It usually ends up being about six folks. But if there's five really good ones and then a drop off, we don't just put a sixth person in there to round out a slate. If there's seven great people, why would we knock one off? So that's just a range. We will have a meeting. We'll share all of the information about the five to seven candidates. And we'll let you ask your questions and we'll let you know as much as we can about them. We also, we also know at this point that in the state of Washington and in your area in particular, usually once the candidates, the six candidates are presented, that there's an expectation that those are shared with the broader community. And we'll work with you if that's the case and we'll prepare profiles and whatever you would need to provide the kind of transparency that your community expects. We'll then help you set up an interview schedule, usually to interview six people. Most boards want to divide that into two days to do that. And these are important initial interviews. So we know that some boards are very experienced in this and others maybe not so much. So we will work with you in the second half of this same meeting, training you on, you know, what to expect, how long should the interview be? We've crafted model questions based on the latest research, which tells us the kind of questions that should be asked to get the best representation of candidates. So those are new, freshly revised, research-based questions, although you can toss those out and ask anything that you'd want. And then we'll give you some advice on consensus building to take those six candidates, interview them, match it to the leadership profile, and then decide who are your finalists going to be. Speaking of finalists, next phase is, I'm sorry. You should go back. There's actually after then this initial interview of five to seven people, then you would get an idea of maybe the top two. Most boards will pick two. Sometimes it's three. But then you will select the people you'd like to bring back for a second interview. Usually the second interview is more informal. Traditionally, you might invite them to dinner at a local restaurant that maybe has a private room in the back. It's a little bit longer because there's a dinner involved, but much more informal. And you can get at some questions you didn't have a chance to get at, or you can do follow-ups. Most boards find that that second interview in that setting really does the trick as far as bringing the consensus together. Back in the initial planning meeting that was process phase one, the thing that we would work with you on is how much more involvement of the community do you want at this point? Many boards at the point when they've identified their finalists would like to have some additional input. Clearly, the board makes the decision, but stakeholders have a vested interest as well. And I know traditionally in your area of the state that many boards make it a practice to bring people in at this stage. So somewhere around the time of the second interview, we would work with you to customize exactly how you want that input to go. Sometimes boards like to have a day in the district where the candidates, final candidates come in and meet different groups throughout the day. Sometimes boards like to have formal interviews so they'll have representative groups of parents, teachers, students, community members, and they would interview the candidates and give written feedback to the board. We could do it with, in many different ways. We have many ideas. And what we would do is try to match what your expectations are and build that in. So after all of that, and then the input from the community, then you're ready to wrap it up, phase five, and make the final decision. And we're there for you throughout this whole process. We're going to help you. If you need any help with contract preparation, we'll help you write a public announcement about it. Number three is really important. We'll stay with the new superintendent, help him or her work with you to have a first hundred days plan. You know, what are you going to do specifically to introduce yourself to the community and staff and begin what we have listed there too, and number four, relationship building. I mentioned we'll be with you every step of the way. It's another thing you can count on. You'll have access to us at any point throughout this process. And both Steve and I are excellent at quick responses and good collaboration. Wrapping it up, then the next, I think there's just a couple more slides. We would work with you on a much more detailed timeline. But the way Steve and I mapped it out, we probably could get through the first phase by August and get the next two phases done in September and really work hard to maybe have a decision by the end of November. And you could announce your new superintendent in December, then have the whole second half of the school year to do transition. And how much will all of this cost? Our flat base fee is $23,000. Our expected expenses are, there's a cost to do that online survey. We have some additional costs for administrative support and office expenses. So if you want to look at it this way, it's probably going to be $25,000 for the fee and normal expenses. The consultant would be up to you. There could be zero for consultants if we were to do everything virtually, or if we were to do some blend, there might be some cost there. Some boards are a little uncomfortable when there's a flat fee and then, you know, expenses. So one thing we do to make boards feel really comfortable is another thing we could do is put a not to exceeds clause in our letter of understanding with you. And we're more than happy to do that. The expenses, we have never surprised a board. We've never had a board challenge us. We like to be as upfront as possible. So we'd work with you on that. This is our best guess is to what your costs would be. And then finally, I'll finally end this and give you a chance for questions. Some of our assurances, we'll be there for you, not just during the process, but after the process as well. We don't like surprises of any kind. We'll give you a two-year guarantee. If, if for any reason things don't work out and you don't have a successful first two years, we will come back and do the search for you again with, for expenses only. And by the way, we've never had to do that, but it is an assurance. And another thing we're very proud of is that we will provide you one year of free mentoring for your superintendent. We will work with him or her. We will establish a pattern of how we want to conduct the mentoring, whether it be, you know, touch base every two weeks, however it works out best. But we're two experienced superintendents. We know about what it's like to be a new superintendent, even if you're an experienced one. And we can be very helpful to you and the new superintendent. And that mentoring goes for you too. If you have any issues, you know, getting to know each other, working things out in that first year, we're there for you. Our success, your success is our success. So that's the presentation. Cam, you can drop the PowerPoint so we can see everybody and I'm open for your questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So.
I have a question. You said that 95% of the placements are offered a successor contract.
Yes. I do not have that information. I could try to find out and get back to you, but I don't have that. I'd say of the vast, vast majority, except we, we really monitor our, our people, any BWP placements. And they're usually there for a good long time. By the way, the only one that didn't have a successful or get asked a second contract was somebody whose spouse got transferred and they had to leave the state. So we, we just, we're real proud of our record. I wish I had that other data for you, but I don't. Wow, my presentation must have been so good, you're speechless.
But I have a problem with the feedback. So hopefully I'll be able to get a sentence out.
Okay.
You talk about, I believe, helping us with creating the compensation. How do you structure total compensation tax? The superintendent's salary is always a big rock of conversation in our community.
Right.
I'd like to hear how you make that decision on what the compensation should be to offer? And what else did we have to think about beyond that basic salary?
Great question. The first thing that we'll do for you is we will do research in your area. And we will get a nice sample of districts that are either close by to you or the same size as you in the same state. Comparables, you know, you can't compare apples to oranges. So we'll try to find six or seven comparable districts. And we will ask them to share with us the entire superintendent package. So that would be salary and benefits. And then you can see what the norm is in your area. And you can make a decision based on that and your own history. What else should be included in the contract? Of course, you know, your usual, just like with teachers, sick days and personal days. Vacation days are very important. Obviously, some sort of family healthcare is an important benefit that superintendents would be looking for. Contributions to the teacher retirement system in the state of Washington would be another factor to look at. And those are your basics. And you probably don't want to add new creative things. As you said, it's an area that a lot of people look at and question. So you want to keep it as simple as you can, but you want it to be competitive. And that's why we'll do the research for you and, you know, get you those comps in both what are the salaries in comparable districts? But as important, what are some benefits that other boards have shared? And you don't have to go by that, but it's a good base to start your discussions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a kind of clarification.
Sure.
I understand your cost and your expenses for the candidates. That's a separate expense for us, correct? Buying them here or do we?
Correct, correct.
But we have that additional. And do you have a ballpark on, I guess it depends on from where they're coming from.
If I could be really honest, companies like us, we often tout, you know, we're a national firm. And that is good because we bring an objective perspective. But if, if your district and your state is like most others, probably 85 to 90% of the candidates will be right from your area.
That was another question I had. I noticed on your list of clients, they were a number, and it's an extensive list, but they're mostly Midwest and Eastern states. How many of those successful placements came from completely different areas of the country? And you may have just answered that question, that most of the candidates end up being local to the search area?
We, our data says that most of the candidates are local and most of the candidates that are selected as the final choice are also local. There are sometimes in the more prestigious suburban areas around Chicago or around, you know, Madison, Wisconsin, you know, wherever they may be, we've done some searches out east and also in California. We find sometimes the more affluent communities sometimes think that there's more benefit to having outside candidates and they'll push. there's more benefit to having outside candidates and they'll push us a little harder to find uh candidates from other states. But I, we're, I'm just telling you, usually the best candidates are, are right there in your backyard.
And have, has your firm had experience in Washington? I know the references.
Yeah, I, I was ready for, for you to ask that. It's perfectly legitimate question. And my honest answer is uh, it's one state we have not been in yet. Steve and I are real eager uh to, to expand our footprint and, you know, to get out to your area. And um personally, I think um there are certainly benefits of knowing a state and knowing an area. But there's also benefits of having a national view and an objective uh voice can come in and look at your needs. And um leadership is leadership. It's this, the same good people and the same good qualities are, are everywhere. So um, I hope you, I uh could um uh, you know, weigh that as you should. But I, I hope you, if you like our process and, and you like the approach and you like, hopefully the honesty that you give uh Steve and I a chance um to, to come and uh break through in Washington. We, we're really excited about the chance to do this for you.
Joe, how does it change your approach with the recruiting? Being in Illinois and being in a new state, what would you do differently than you've done in other places?
Well, in Illinois, uh Steve and I know almost all the superintendents and the up and comers. And uh, we have connections to the local universities. And so uh, we would be able, without even having to elicit the help of anybody else, um start making phone calls. Quite honestly, when we get uh jobs in other states, which, which we do often, we then have to rely a little bit more on our associates in the area. And um, so rather than me know some people to call, we would call, you know, some of our associates and contacts in your area. And that's how we might start doing some of that personal recruiting. Or we might have to contact um some of the key universities and uh who are doing doctoral programs for school administrators. And maybe get some young up and comers and, and, or some experienced uh superintendents that way. So it might, this is a great question. It might involve a few more phone calls. But uh, our basic philosophy, I said it, I think in my opening sentence. We don't just put the announcement up and cross our fingers and hope the right people apply. We're extremely proactive. So since Washington isn't our backyard and, and isn't our home base, we'd, we'd have to work a little bit harder, but we have associates throughout the country. We know exactly who we would call.
So I'm happy to address diversity and inclusion in your search. We thought we're, we are a very diverse community.
I was uh looking at your um report card, state report card, and I noticed uh a very diverse community. Your um Hispanic population looks to be about twenty-one percent. And you have a mixed race and Asian population, another ten percent. So um, you are reflecting what we see throughout the whole country. What you're experiencing is a growth in diversity. We're really proud. Um, we, half of our ten partners are female. And three are African-American. And our managing partner, Deb Hill, is an African-American woman. And so uh diversity is just a main value of BWP and associates. Um, and so we have many contacts with um the educational organizations of African-Americans and Asians and Hispanics. And um, it's always a challenge to get a balanced slate of candidates to bring to you. And we don't set up quotas, you know, with our six people. But if we don't bring you some uh diverse candidates, or if we bring you six men and no women, you know, then we're not following our own values in BWP. So we work really hard at that. It, it's not just um something I'm telling you because I think that's what you want to hear. Um, we live it and breathe it and, and speak it. Right now, as we speak, uh Deb Hill, our managing partner, is conducting the superintendent search in Chicago. Um, that was a, a big search that our firm just got. And uh, as you may imagine, they wanted to make sure that they had a firm that knew what they were doing as far as recruiting diverse candidates. That's us. Your questions are great. What else do you have for me?
Describe yourself as a mentor. Can you tell us a story of an impactful mentorship that you've done?
I, I would love to. We did a um, a superintendent search in a affluent uh Chicago suburb. And the board had a little trouble um reaching a consensus. And um, they ended up have, uh making a decision on a kind of a consensus candidate. The top two candidates kind of um blocked each other out. And to get to a consensus, they went to a third candidate. So you could imagine there were some feelings and uh there. And it was a little bit tough for him to get started. We told the board that, you know, we would do even more mentoring than uh um we normally did because of the way he started. And uh, we met with him every two weeks, every two weeks, a formal meeting. And he would come to us with questions and issues. And we would come to him with questions and issues that maybe he hadn't thought of. We also kept really good communication with the school board president through this process. And what could have been an awkward um start to his tenure there turned into a very successful year. He just finished his seventh year and was just offered a new three-year contract. So that's one we're real proud of.
Thank you.
Hmm.
What are your options for running the focus groups in multiple languages?
We have translators and also I forgot to mention that all of our surveys uh, we have translated into any language that, that uh you would want out there in your community. We um, we did a search recently in Wisconsin where um no, actually, it was the state of New York where um the main language of forty percent of the people was a um, some sort of dialect from Haiti. And uh, that was our biggest challenge, but we found a translator and she joined us for the focus groups. And we had an excellent conversation. So we would work with you uh in both translating documents and having translators at the focus groups.
Thank you.
Hmm.
What advice do you have? I know when we've done um different focus groups and surveys and trying to get community input. And it's, it always seems like people want their voice to be heard, but aren't real eager to come to meetings. Or sometimes you get the same people. How do you, what does your firm use to help try to expand and get broader input from the community?
Yeah, what you just described is a, um, seems to be a universal challenge as well. Um, one thing that has helped is offering the survey. Um, we, we find that um a lot of people don't want to come in and do a focus group, but they're happy to spend, you know, ten minutes on that survey. So one of the things we do is we really work with you on publicizing that and really getting a, a good response. The other thing that um sometimes boards and superintendents are reluctant to do, but Steve and I have found it very effective is inviting people. Um, you know, sometimes you don't, you do, you get the same people all the time. And so, you know, you, you might ask uh your principals or your high school boosters. Who are some key people that we maybe could ask to do a focus group that we don't hear from too often? And I bet your administrators would be able to suggest people. And it's very flattering to get an invitation to come in and, and speak at a focus group. So that has been our most effective way of bringing new voices to the mix.
Thank you.
Hmm.
What's your perception of the current market in terms of willingness to either travel or relocate? Coming off of the year and a half that we've had.
Well, one of the trends unfortunately that we've seen is um an acceleration of retirements. Um, I don't know if that year of COVID just burned out a lot of people or was just so uh stressful that people who were even remotely thinking about retiring have decided to just do it. So uh, we are seeing a proliferation of searches. And uh, that could be good or bad. Um, but at the same time, we are not seeing any decrease in applicants. Um, normally, and this seems, this varies a little bit from state to state. But uh normally, I would think about thirty people will probably apply. If you get more than that, fabulous. If you get less than that, no need to panic because it only takes one. Um, so it's an interesting time. I think we need to do a little more uh research to see how this plays out. But I'm anticipating many more uh openings. And um, as you know, when there's openings, then there's a lot of movement. And so maybe an assistant superintendent takes a superintendent position. And then there's assistant superintendents or one superintendent does a lateral move and then another opening. So um I don't know, can you, maybe uh, can you guys tell me a little bit, do, are you hearing about a lot of superintendent retirements in your area?
About a third of the superintendents in our ESD, our Educational Service District hmm, are uh um resigning their positions this year.
That matches uh some similar statistics I've seen here in Illinois. Yeah. That's why um uh you guys are doing a great job with the timing on this. Because we can be in, there's, there's three waves of searches. Uh, the first wave is where you want to be. Um, that's where you can start, you know, right after uh the summer in August. You get out there, you're the first ones out there. You get all the people who are eager to apply. You get everything wrapped up by November. The second wave usually comes uh about January. And usually that is new openings that have exist, that have come up because superintendents have moved into new positions. And then the third wave is late. We just wrapped up the superintendent search is really late. Um, and that's when uh somebody resigns uh without notice or gets transferred, their spouse gets transferred. Um, so we, we see three waves. Uh, your basic timeline um that, that you shared in your documents would put you square in the first wave. And so that gives you an advantage.
I want to go back to focus groups for a moment.
Sure.
Focus groups take time of, of, from the participants. And so while it may be an honor to be asked, it also can be a burden. Have you ever worked with districts to compensate focus group members?
That I, I have never seen. No, no, that's an interesting, that's a creative idea. Yeah.
Or offer childcare during the focus group?
That we've had. And that is very popular. Um, we would get either some teachers or teacher assistants willing to help us out, uh maybe open up the gym. And uh, as the parents and uh community members come in, they can um have their kids in good hands, share a half hour of their time and head home. That's a very effective strategy that we have used.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Other questions from anyone?
It's been a pleasure speaking with you. I've really enjoyed your questions. Uh, they're very insightful and spot on. And uh, no matter who you decide, uh best of luck with your uh decision. I know you've heard this before, but there's no decision a board makes that's more important than who the superintendent is. It is absolutely the most critical uh decision that you make. So best of luck as, as you move through that process. I have one question, if there's time, and, and that's just um do you uh have a timeline for when you are going to make your decision about the, the search firm?
Uh, well, we're going to discuss it tonight and depending on that discussion, we couldn't even be making a decision tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. And I assume you'll let us know one way or another?
Absolutely.
Great. Well, on behalf of Steve, he wanted me to thank you for understanding why he couldn't be here. And uh, again, we'd love to come and do this search for you and uh show a, show you what we can do.
Thank you, Joe. That was a great presentation.
We appreciate, thank you. Take care now.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Okay. We have about seven minutes before the next one. So if you need to take a break, please do so.
Are you playing your computer? Your computer? Is that why the reverb, how did they?
I don't know.
Maybe you want to, maybe you want to.
I think it was his computer.
I think it was.
Oh, he had it on?
Oh.
I think he needed it. I can't figure it out.
Well, once it got, once it got figured out.
I know.
So you just have to talk louder.
I have to go.
Okay.
We're saving our discussion until after.
You're going to hear a lot of this. Well, when you read through their, I mean, they're real similar. I mean, there's Greeks here and that.
What's been happening forever?
The big one.
Four hours.
I'm Jake. The monster.
Six six.
I see two. Do you recognize this? A joke.
What's the same?
I did. I thought.
This is the one guy. Postcard.
It must be an officer. He would have.
It's over. Well, he said that he's currently a part-time superintendent. I wasn't sure.
Part-time superintendent.
Yeah, which is a little for in. Yeah. Had to go look.
I thought I missed the whole.
There the evil. It was hard. Kelly loves this card her life. Technology is designed to make you look either really good or.
This guy's now muted and the video. Mr. Parker, are you on the screen right now?
Good thing.
Yeah.
Can we just camera live?
It didn't lie.
Okay. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Oh.
Yeah.
Yes. Great. Get my video going.
Good.
Okay. Got my name right and we have the video set up. Okay, Kelly, I'm set.
All right. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for inviting us. Me.
So thank you. I'm Andrew McLauren. I'm the president of the board.
Hello, Andrew.
We'll go around the table and introduce ourselves just to give you a type of reference. So Mark.
I'm Mark Diva, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Court Services.
Okay, Mark.
I'm John Fairbairn, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Hey, John.
I'm Leanne Riddle. I'm a school board member.
Hey, Leanne. I'm sorry, that was Leanne, right?
Yep.
Hi, Leanne.
I'm Melinda Cool. I'm also a school board member.
Okay, Melinda. Hi.
I'm Kevin Erickson. I'm a school board member.
Hi, Kevin.
Andrew here.
I'm Lynda Quinn. I'm the current superintendent.
Hello, Linda.
Don't see there door, school board.
My name is Carl. I'm a student representative.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Kelly Larabee and I'm one of the executive directors of teaching and learning.
Hello, Kelly.
Hi, I'm Babe Brits and I'm the other executive director of teaching and learning.
Excellent. Great.
Okay.
Okay.
We will turn it over to you.
So it's over to me. Well, thank you. Again, thank you very much for inviting me to present to you the services of McPherson Jacobson. My colleague, Rich Stewart, who's actually a resident of Ferndale, could not make it this evening, unfortunately. He sends his regrets, but he hopes you will hire us and then he will be able to, to meet you in the near future. Let me just start off and tell you a little bit about myself. And then we'll talk about the company, some of the things that we think stand out for McPherson Jacobson. And then, and then of course, from what I understand, we have about twenty minutes to do that. And then we will then get questions from, from the board. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
Good. Okay. So I began my professional career as a teacher. I taught for ten years in, in Greenwich, Connecticut, Greenwich High School. And then after about ten years, I had received a flight instructor rating. And I was offered a position to run a flight school in Colorado. So I left public school teaching. And then kind of about oh, six or seven years later, found myself up here in the Northwest. Actually began pursuing education, but got involved in computer programming and developing online learning workspaces. And that was in the late nineties. So in the early two thousands, I kind of missed public education and I decided to run for the school board. So I was elected in, I believe it was two thousand one or three for the South Whitby School Board. And I think Andrew, I was reading your profile like, like yourself. As soon as I got on the school board, we had a, an issue in, in South Whitby and the superintendent left. So I think I was in my second month and we were searching for a new superintendent. So we went through a search, brought in an interim. And then two years later, that interim was there for two years. We had a permanent for about five years. And then in my last couple of years, we actually did another search and I was actually school board president when we did the search for the first permanent and I was school board president when we did the search for the person in two thousand and eleven. We used McPherson and Jacobson as the search firm. It actually used a couple of other search firms for the other two searches. And I really liked the process. I liked the, it was really the whole process that McPherson and Jacobson offered. And they offered me a job and I actually left the school board to do search superintendent search consulting with McPherson and Jacobson. That superintendent actually who we hired is currently today still the superintendent of the South Whitby School District. So yeah, one of the things I realized in that as I was school board member, being going through this process and it being a really positive process for the community and the school board and the school district as a whole is, is really, really important. It's actually, it's, it's critical. So I became very passionate in actually going through three superintendent searches as a school board member. I became very passionate in wanting to be a part of this process and really being a help or being able to help school districts do successful searches. So so currently I've been doing that. I also worked for WASTA as a consultant from around two thousand and eight to about two thousand and fifteen. I was one of the WASTA consultants and the area that they usually used me on was with the the standards. I focused on standard number four usually on the, on that accountability standard and we do a lot of workshops around that. So that's myself. That's a little bit about myself. And what I'd like to do is you all have the proposal in front of you?
Yes.
Everybody have that there? Okay. So actually I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm not going to go through any slides or anything. We're going to kind of go right through the proposal. And let me move it over here on my screen. Okay. So if we just go to page three. And so a couple of things I'll just highlight about our company. So is everybody there on page three?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, great. So we're a leading national search firm. We're one of the three largest search firms in the country. We actually in the last couple of years, we can now say that we're actually the oldest search firm in the country. The two other firms Hazard, Young and Atia and Ray and Associates have been bought out in the last couple of years and they have new ownership. But Tom Jacobson still owns the firm and has owned the firm for about thirty years. We've placed, as it says there, eight hundred and fifteen superintendents in the superintendents and people in public office. We also will do executive managers of counties and nonprofit organizations. So the other thing that I think is important to note is that we have a national network. We have a hundred and ten consultants in thirty-eight states. And those consultants are from, they are, you know, former superintendents, they're college professors. They are people who've worked in state departments of education and they're school board members. In fact, the Louisiana, all of the consultants in the state of Louisiana are all former school board members. So we have that diversity in, in expertise which my colleague who works with me, Rich Stewart, he retired from, I believe it was Enham Claw or I'm sorry, Edenville School District. And he has been the kind of working, I would say for the last five or six years at least as a interim superintendent. So he's over in Chimacum. He was over in Kidittas and most recently down in La Conner as the interim superintendent there. And Rich and I have worked together and we actually did the search together in Kidittas and Ellensburg. One of the things I really like working with Rich is that that he has a different perspective as a superintendent and I have a different perspective as a school board member from that kind of community perspective. So that we, as we interact with each other, going through applicants, going through even the, the state of the district. We're able to have a really rich discussion between the two of us because we have different perspectives. And I think it's a really healthy and important part of what we, he and I bring to the table. So one of the things that Waterson Marzano in a study that they did showed that, and this is also if we, you look at the study that the Iowa School Boards Foundation did with the lighthouse work that a positive relationship between the board and a superintendent does go from that boardroom down to the, to the classroom. And that if there is a let's say any kind of negativity or dysfunction with that relationship, that will affect student achievement. And that's what they found in their report. So that we as the search firm or as the consultants for the superintendent search, one of our main goals is to really make sure that we find the best fit, somebody who really best fits the Ferndale community. So that we have over the last seven, five years, over seventy percent are still in that position. And the last you know, ten years, fifty percent. And I would say I've been with the firm since two thousand and eleven, so about ten years. And I'd say actually my statistics are probably a little bit higher. That I would say majority of almost eighty percent are still in the position in, in, you know, of those that I did that ten years ago. Okay. So what I want to do is I want to skip now down to page six. And just want to outline some of the things that I think make our firm stand out. First of all, we're looking for a partnership with the school board. We will help facilitate this process for you. But we want to make it very clear that this is your process. This is the, and, and the board has, what we want to do is make you control that process. You along the way. So that the so we're kind of partnering with you in that we'll help you, you know, come up with your criteria statements and we'll help facilitate those community meetings. But the, the important thing is the design of this. And I've, in the ten years I've done searches, I would say not one of the searches has been identical. Everyone is different because every community is different. Every school board is different. Every school district is different. So we really listen to you and see what your needs are and try to fulfill those needs. In fact, we have a little. So we really listen to you and see what your needs are and try to fulfill those needs. In fact, we have a little slogan. We say if it's not illegal, immoral, or unethical, we'll do it. We'll do whatever, you know, the, the the school board of the community desires. One of the things from the very beginning, when Tom started the business is that there are firms that still, and still to this day, there are firms that they don't provide any information to the community of, you know, who the applicants are, you know, what's going on in the process. It's done really behind closed doors. And that's kind of the old way of they're doing superintendent searches. From day one, they said what was gonna make Pearson and Jacobson stand out was transparency. And I know as a school board member, you know, I'm kind of a, a data walk and I love to see data and information. And unless I get to see all of that, I really felt like I wasn't making an informed decision. So all of the information that we have, so for example, the applications that come in. We average usually between thirty, forty, fifty applicants per position. I think I had, and this was actually, I was very surprised at this. We had thirty-five applicants for the blame position. And they did theirs last summer, right in the middle of the summer and very surprised to have that many. But what we provide to you is all of the, the resumes and the cover letters to every single person who applied. So that, and you get that a couple of weeks ahead. So it's just an example that we want to give you all the information that you have. All, all the information to you so that you, when you come in and have to make a decision, you feel that that's an informed decision. So the other things on here I want to stand out is to say, yeah, we'll take you through what we call consensus decision-making process to help you with your board criteria. We also work with the community. And one of the great things about doing a superintendent search is that this is an opportunity for your district and the community and the, the school community to kind of take stock of where you are in that continuum of development. Where is the Ferndale School District in its accomplishments and achievements? And where do you want to go? Where are some things that you want to do in the future? So it's kind of doing a mini little strategic planning if you want to kind of say, you know, where do we want to go in the future? And that is really, I think, a, a really positive piece of a superintendent search. Because it's all surrounds this new leader that you're gonna bring into the district. And what you want to do is you want to, you know, kind of find out where through your community members, school, district staff, students. Where is it that you want to go? And what type of leader is going to take you to that next step? So that's all that we do in that, that when we're doing the key stakeholder meetings and so, let me just scroll back. One of the, I think the other thing to remember is that since we have a national network, we're going to be putting out the information throughout the country to all hundred and ten consultants. We have over a thousand people in our database. Our website is one of the main websites that people across the country hit, usually ours. Rain Associates and Hazard Young and Thea, because we do the majority of searches. Applicants will go to our red website and look at the postings on there. And so we, we throw out a very large net. The other thing I want to kind of, probably the last thing here is that once you've made the selection, we're not gonna just leave you hanging there and and go off into the sunset. What we're gonna do is through our phase five, which is the, the final phase, sit down with the board and the new superintendent and kind of go through that information that we had discovered during that research phase of the key stakeholders. One of the things that you want to focus on and you as a board and superintendent team with us helping facilitate that meeting. Will develop some short, short-term goals, one, two-year goals that the new superintendent will begin to focus on. And by doing that and us staying in touch with you for that first year, we ensure that there aren't any foundational pieces. Now, I know you do policy governance, which is a really solid way of, of operating the, the, the school district. But what you, you know, we want to make sure that all of the policy pieces are in place and that there's, you know, that your evaluation tools are you know, appropriate and everyone understands how that evaluation is gonna happen. And then we just kind of monitor it through the first year. By doing that, we'll guarantee the search for two years. Which means if, for whatever reason, the superintendent leaves within the two-year period, we'll come back and do the search with, with no fees, just the expenses. So just looking at my time and it looks like I have ten minutes left. Is that? Am I, it looks like I got about five minutes left here. Five minutes, yeah. Alright, so I wanted you to turn to page, this is page seven. And I'm just gonna outline these steps and these steps are the same, probably five steps or four, five steps that you'll see from all the search terms. We pretty much all do the, this, the same way, but just gonna highlight our, our method and maybe you'll see some things that distinguish us from, from other firms. But in the first phase, we, we call this the planning phase and it's sitting down with the board, sitting down with you know, other, other staff members and it's determining the timeline, it's determining, you know, the, the specific dates. We may or may not, depending on your decision, whether we do the criteria statements. That's the established, the characteristics. Some boards wait until after phase two to do that. But phase one is generally those first couple of meetings is, is just for us to develop, to, to plan out the entire search process and to develop or, and to, you know, divvy up the, the responsibilities or make clear what the responsibilities are. A phase two is actually what I call the research phase. And that's that little strategic planning if you want. It's for us, Rich and I to really get to know the Ferndale School District, Ferndale Community. So that we have a better sense of who it is we're going to recruit. But it's also to give the community an opportunity to really engage with the board. As your community at, you know, at large, but also your school community. Everyone to get together, to have a discussion on what is really good about this district. What are the things you really want to keep? And one of the things you want to really look at improving on as you move forward. So in that research phase, that's really what we're doing. And through that process, Rich and I are getting a good sense on, again, who Ferndale as a community is and who Ferndale School District is as we go out and we start doing our recruiting. Phase three is actually where we're going out doing the recruiting. Although I know it does have that attached in this diagram to phase two. But it really in phase three, we're going out and we're looking and it's kind of what we call a silent period because there's about a month there that we're gonna be looking, recruiting people, getting them to apply. Application periods open for about a month. And then at that, the end of that is when we go into the phase four. Which is actually going to select the applicants and going through the application process. Which again, we're there. At that point, what I have found, my experience is that school boards have now become very comfortable with the process. I know Linda's been there a very long time. I think, um, it was just, Andrew, you were the only one on the board? Or Leanne, I was gonna say Leanne might have been there too. So you were the ones who were really on the, on the board. So everyone is really new to this process. So we hope that, and we, we will by phase four, everyone will become very comfortable on the whole process, what we're doing. And you're kind of taking control of it as we get into the interview process. So I'm two minutes over my twenty minutes. So let me end there and turn it over to you guys.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and ask my compensation question. You talk about helping make a decision about compensation and the package for, for the superintendent. How do you go about structuring that? Superintendent salaries are a big topic of conversation in, within the community. And so how do you go about structuring that and what else beyond the basic salary?
Okay, so, so can you tell me, it's hard, I've got a picture of all of you. I can't see who's speaking. So who was that who just? Leanne, okay, Leanne. That's a good question. Leanne, we just did that. I just finished the search with Shelton. And so there's a couple of dynamics to that. One, thank God that now superintendents are that their healthcare is now the same, they're part of that state program. So that's not a component. That was a really difficult thing to negotiate. We helped through the negotiation process between the new superintendent and the board. Alright, we will help. We offer that. I would say ninety-nine percent of school districts take us up on that and have us do that negotiation. The first thing we'll do is work with you, starting in phase two of getting some comparative, some comparable districts. So when we go, we go to, you know, the OSPI, which is really the Kitsap Sun and get the data of the, you know, the salaries off of there. But they always have that other, which means then we have to go to the district, get the contract to find out what that other is. So we break it down that way. We have a really good frank conversation with you, the board, is what is it that you want? What is your community want? You know, do you want to have those added things in there, which is, you know, travel or technology, or do you want to eliminate that and put that all in, you know, upfront in salary? So we have a lot of conversation about what it is that you want to do. What's your philosophy behind, you know, the compensation? And then I'm with those comparables with what you guys have decided as the five board members of where you think it should be. Then we actually will develop a range. One of the things that I found that is important is that we sometimes have, so you're a forty-eight hundred student district, I think, right? You're about forty-eight hundred, forty-three? Alright, so it, it's likely that we have, I've had this before. We'll have someone from, let's say, you know, Seattle or Highline and, you know, an assistant super, assistant director, apply. Sometimes they're making more than your current superintendent. So really have to keep our eye on that then and make sure that, that applicant understands and knows. So I'm actually finding that now. Whenever we have, when we get down to that shortlist, I go and look at what their current salary is. So, Leanne, it's working with you, going out, doing the research, coming back, talking to you. Again, you finding out, you know, where you want to be as a board. And then us having frank conversations with the, sometimes it's the applicants. But let them know that here's the ballpark and just let you know that you're over what they're gonna be offering. Do you still want the job?
So what is the additional fee for attending the interviews? Is that a daily rate or how is that calculated?
Okay, so, you know, are, are you, can you tell me the page number there? I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to. Say it again?
Bottom of twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay, thank you. Okay, so for the hold on, almost there. Twenty-five to six. Okay. For the, if you decide to do a semifinal, which is actually what most districts do. They have a semifinal round. There's no cost for us and that's usually done on a Saturday. And it's usually all day long because you're gonna be interviewing about five people. And we'll be attending that. That's part of the fourteen thousand six hundred. That's included in that. If you want us at the all-day, so the three finalists come all day for three, one each day for three days. If you want us to attend that, then there's, there'll be a fee for that. It's usually about eight hundred a day. In the ten years I've been doing this, as I said before, that usually we try to get it that school boards, all of you are very comfortable with the process and what's going on. You're taking hold of that at that point and you actually don't even need us. We just check in with a phone call in the evening. So I have actually, I, I don't recommend you actually paying for us to come those final days. But that Saturday is included. That Saturday interview.
Thank you. How, how does your firm ensure diversity of candidates? And, and meeting the needs of a community like ours?
Well, so I know you, you have, the, the, let me reservation is part of your district, correct? Yeah, and you've got about eight percent. So we had that in Shelton. They have actually two reservations that are part of their, their district. So we went out and I believe there is an office of Native American something at OSPI. And what I did is I created, you know, an email with all the board's criteria. And we sent it directly to them so that they could send it out to their members within their, their network at OSPI. And there was also, I was given this link or this connection to this organization, again, Native American organization, but it was higher ed mainly. And they wanted to advertise in their, on their website or in their, it was actually on their website. It, it was a free link and so there's no cost to them. But as I went through their website, it was mainly secondary education. But we, we put a link up there on their website. There was no charge for that. And so, you know, the advice to, to me, if you're looking for someone in the Latino community, it would be advertising in a las. Because that mainly most of the Latin American or the Latino administrators belong to that organization. And so with the, the, I think it's in a DSC, which is the African-American. So it would be really applying there. It really going out and targeting those associations where we know that those people of color would be associated with those associations. Did that answer it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. You know, let me, let me say, I'm, I'm sorry, let me just say one other thing. If there's something really specific that you think is important in whatever diverse group that you're really looking for and you want to reach out to it. Again, well, I would reach out to my 110 consultants across the country and find, you know, out where's the best place. Um, because we do have a diversity of, uh, consultants. And within that group, I would reach out to them and say, and, and ask that question. Where would be the best place for me to go to look for this one specific, uh, um, group of, uh, uh, candidates? That's it.
So within that diversity, you know, one of the part of the phase two research is getting the stakeholders input. How, what strategy do you use to get the input? You know, there are certain people you always get their input, no matter, you know, what you're asking. How do you get beyond the, the stereotypical, you know, people that give you the input all the time and reach out to get into the diversity of the community to get broad input?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, as, as school board member, you, you provide meetings and it's the same group of people that show up and you're in the same voices and the same stuff all the time. Um, you know, one of the things that I think was a real positive out of COVID was the use of Zoom. Um, so in Shelton, we had to do all Zoom meetings. And one of the things that I found, um, and I really want to try this in, in the next year. Um, because as we lift the restrictions, obviously people are going to want to go back to the face to face because they're more comfortable with that. But what we did in Shelton is that, um, my colleague who I worked with down there, Nathan McCann, who's the superintendent Ridgefield, um, he and I actually had, uh, I would say about four to five hours of Zoom meetings. So it was an hour, so we probably had, I think it was about four each day, Monday through Thursday for two weeks. And we targeted, uh, different groups. So we gave all of this time and for us, it was easier because obviously I live in Everett. So for me to drive up to Ferndale is, you know, is a haul. But if I can sit here in my, um, you know, in my kitchen and be able to get online, then I can spend, easily spend four hours, um, going out and just doing Zoom meetings. So I'm thinking that we're going to do a hybrid next year. So, uh, one of the strategies I'd like to see is that, um, because we did find this is that as we stayed online, you know, and we're, you know, we're there. So we did parent groups, maybe four times. We actually had more people participate um, through our Zoom meetings than I've ever had before in 10 years at the face to face. Because people could just hook up on, uh, from home. And I think there were a lot of people who didn't normally come to those face to face meetings. They come to the face to face meetings in the schools, actually decided to come, uh, online through their computer. So it's a strategy that I'm hoping to use next fall. But I hear, I, I'm sorry, I hear exactly what you're saying is that, you know, not hearing the same voices um, is really important and, you know, um, and, and sometimes challenging.
Do you often do focus groups with students?
Oh, love, uh, yeah. In fact, um, I would say, uh, yes, we'll do high school students and middle school students. And what I have said, and I am right almost a hundred percent of the time, is that your middle school students are where you get the best information. Because they're old enough to have been in the system long enough that they have an opinion. And number two, they're not old enough to have any kind of a social filter and not blurt out. So I love the middle school kids. I love the middle school teacher too, so.
Are there opportunities for the focus groups to be in multiple languages?
Yes, uh, yeah. Um, obviously I, I don't speak, uh, any other language but English. Um, but I have, uh, we actually did the Zoom meeting. Um, we had two of them in Spanish. They have a, a number of, uh, Guatemalan, um, and, and Hispanics, uh, residents in Shelton. So we did them, um, and we had an interpreter. And, uh, and it worked really well over Zoom. Um, although the interpreter sometimes would forget that he was supposed to be speaking Spanish and he would speak English in his translation. And see, hey, Jose, you need to be speaking Spanish, not English. But, um, no, we, we, so, uh, we would, we would ask you to help us and, uh, to get, we don't have translators on staff or interpreters in, on staff. Um, but if you would, we would work with them. Um, and we would do that, I've done that face to face in a number of districts, uh, had a Spanish only meeting. And, um, you know, work with them to do that.
Hi, so this is Leanne again. I really appreciated your, um, idea about stakeholder groups and having a chair of the stakeholder groups that then pull together the information and give it back to us in a written form. Can you just talk about that process a little bit more?
Of getting the information back to you?
Just setting up that stakeholder group and how you interact with them? Are you there for the conversation to help us with the conversations? Or you just set it up with the whoever has been designated as the chair?
No, 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 well, we, we, we actually facilitate the whole meeting. And, um, so we're going to ask them, um, because remember we, we're kind of doing that. And I keep calling it a mini strategic planning process. We're going to ask them four questions. What do they really like about the Ferndale, uh, school dis, or Ferndale community? Uh, what are the real positive aspects of living in Ferndale? Then what are the things that they really like about the Ferndale School District? What are the positive things that they don't want to see change in the school district itself? So once we get the, everybody talking real positively, then we kind of switch over and we go, what are some of the things that need to change in the Ferndale School District? And then finally, we ended with what kind of characteristics or qualities do you think are important in a, in a leader in order to help you make some of those changes? So those four questions is what I do. I just ask the question and then kind of facilitate and get the, uh, you know, the, the group to just start a dialogue and, and we capture everything that they say. Um, and then we also have an online survey that, and, and what I've found actually in the last couple of years, there are more and more people going to the survey and filling that out. Uh, we capture everything that, uh, is said under those four questions. Uh, we will not edit that except if, and it's in, in the survey, it says, don't say anything disparaging about any, any person, um, or that would be edited or any foul language. Um, so we will delete any comments about a particular person or any bad language. But bad grammar, it, all of it gets copied and sent to you. Um, you'll get a booklet that will be our meetings that we had with the community and our summary of, you know, what we heard from each stakeholder group, from the students to the parents, to the community members, the business community, to the teachers, administrators. We break them all down in specific groups or key stakeholder groups so that all of your secondary teachers are together and then your elementary teachers. We don't actually, we separate the teachers into two groups. Um, so you'll get a breakdown of each one of those groups. And then, uh, in the back half, you'll get the online comments, um, in, as they were, uh, put up on the, um, you know, into the survey.
Okay.
All right.
Do you find that most of your applicants are typically come from surrounding areas? Or do you actually see people moving across country to take positions?
No, that, you know, uh, and who, is that Kevin or?
Oh, that's Andrew.
Andrew, okay, Andrew. Um, you know, that's a great question, Andrew. And I'll tell you that, um, one of the, the, one of the things that, um, that I think is, is really important about McPherson Jacobson. If you look at superintendents and Linda might be able to tell you, um, you know, just the people we've brought in from around the country. Um, so, um, they've come from all over. Um, and I'm drawing a blank on, on names, but our Orca superintendent, for example, um, he came from Oklahoma. And, uh, they were having a tough time in Orca. So they had gone through a number of superintendents in about a five, seven year period. They were just not getting anybody, um, and the district was really struggling. And, um, and he, he came in and, you know, so he came from Tulsa, Oklahoma. One of the things that they were really cautious about in Orca is that a lot of people think, oh, it's beautiful, beautiful place, you know, I'll go there and then all of a sudden they get there and the, the reality hits them that, you know, they've got to take the ferry and it just doesn't work out for them. So one of the things that we do and we really spay, pay special attention to find out what is your story? Why are you coming to the Northwest? And what had happened with him is that his daughter had just graduated high school and she wanted to go to college somewhere in the West Coast. And his son had just graduated, uh, middle school and wanted to study marine biology, which they don't have a lot of in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And when the, uh, job came, and he was the assistant superintendent of the Tulsa, Tulsa, uh, Oklahoma School District, I believe. Um, and that was in 2011 or 12 and he's still there. Um, his daughter graduated from, um, Western and his son, I think, graduated or is in, uh, UW studying marine biology. So, um, that was for that family, it was a perfect time for them to move. Uh, the gentleman who is in Othello has the same story. Um, he and his wife had just become empty nesters. They had been, he was the assistant superintendent of the San Diego School District. Um, had once, when he was a kid, lived in Washington, uh, actually in Yakima and really wanted to come back to, to Washington. And, uh, so he'd been there. He was actually just recently a finalist for the Vancouver Superintendent. But he's been in Othello for about seven years. Um, and, uh, one last one, Joe, um, who is the superintendent in South Whitby. Uh, her story was that she had come to Whitby Island. Uh, her daughter had gotten married there. And she was just so impressed with the Northwest and, and Whitby Island. And it just so happened that within a year, she saw on McPherson Jacobson's website, uh, and the position posted for, uh, South Whitby. And she jumped in. So, oh, I'm sorry. Um, so, so again, it's finding out what their stories are. Now, the other thing I want to say about outside candidates. Um, I think having it out, you, Washington State is not as unique as you think it is. Um, you know, it infects budgets in other states are a lot more challenging than they are here in Washington. In fact, in Connecticut, you not as a school board, you approve the budget that gets submitted from the superintendent. After you approve that, it then is sent to the city council for final approval. Um, and that's just the way they, so you, it doesn't just go on to the state. So there's a lot more, uh, hands involved in developing a budget in the, uh, state of Connecticut. Um, what I have found is that everyone who's come from out of state said that it didn't take them long to kind of figure out the, most of it is just the, some of the, some of the laws and some of the things around the RCWs. Um, but K-12 districts around the country are pretty much all the same. I think the positive is that they're bringing in an outside perspective from a different state. And I think that really enrichens the, um, they are whole K-12 system here in Washington. Uh, my colleague down in, that I do searches with, who we hired in Ridgefield, uh, came from Arizona. And actually, uh, up in Blaine, um, uh, Mr. Granger came from, uh, Texas and Arizona. So I, I think it's really worth, uh, a school board looking nationally. Um, you always know that the people who are local in the state of Washington, everyone's going to know, everyone already knows that Ferndale's looking. Um, so you don't have to worry about Washington. It's just attracting those national candidates. That's, I think, is important. So Andrew, that, did that answer it for you?
Yes, it did, thank you.
All right.
Well, it's been a great presentation. I'm going to ask if there are any final questions from the board or administrative team?
Yes, sure. This is Leanne again. Um, you mentioned onsite visitations for the finalists. How often does that happen? Where, where we go onsite to where the finalist is?
No, yeah, no, no, uh, when I said onsite, that was them coming to you. Um, no, I, you know, Serge, I've kind of gotten away from you traveling to other districts. And I think there's a number of reasons. One that, the reason that used to happen is that it just didn't have enough information about that person in that school district. But now with the internet, you can find anything you really need to find out about, uh, you know, a person. And I, I think the cost of sending school board members out, you know, um, you know, and it probably will be, you're, you're an attractive district. Um, so you probably will, and Wat- and Watcom County is a very attractive county. As you all know, a lot of superintendents come and stay there for a very long time. Um, so that you're likely to attract people from out of state. Um, so I, I, I don't think the cost of going out and going to, uh, visit a school district of where that person's at, that you get enough information to, to justify that cost.
Okay, thank you. And that was actually in your packet? That wasn't something you said? I took that out of your pack.
About site, where did you find that? I.
Towards the end because it's towards the end of my notes.
Yeah, it was towards the end. I remember reading.
Really? Okay. Um, all right, I'm gonna. Uh, you know what? I see additional services, schedule an onsite visitation, uh, to the finalist's home district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you know what? And, all right, well, I'm going to speak to the home office about that one.
Well, I think your point about, um, online presence and what you can do research wise makes perfect sense.
Yeah. Keep, keep the money in the classroom.
All right. Well, thank you so much for a great presentation, lots of good answers. Uh, we will be meeting tonight. We may even make a decision tonight, but we'll say we'll be back in touch with you and let you know the results of that.
All right. And, uh, Kelly, you have my cell phone number, right?
I do, yes.
Right. So if you guys make a decision, um, just, uh, letting me know either a call or text, that would be great. I'd appreciate that.
Certainly. Thank you again.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you again.
Good night.
All right, good night.
Okay, so we have just a couple of minutes before the next presentation. So I'll take a quick break. Ready to start. All right. Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
Here in the middle, I'm Andrew, Andrew McQuarrie, school board president. So I thought we would go around the table and introduce ourselves, just so you have some point of reference for us. We appreciate you being here at this late hour. So.
Mark. Mark, you're the assistant superintendent for business and support services.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
I'm John Perrin, the executive director of human resources.
Yeah, little school board member.
Hi there.
I'm Melinda Cool, school board member.
Kevin Erickson, uh, school board member.
Andrew McQuarrie, school board.
Linda Quinn, current superintendent.
School board.
Kwangwin, student representative.
Kelly Lehrer, the executive director of teaching and learning.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
Favorite, um, the other executive director of teaching and learning.
Dr. Brad.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see everybody. Good to see everybody. Quite a crowd.
How would you like to proceed?
Well, we will turn it over to you and you can do your presentation and then we'll have some time for questions at the end.
Perfect. That works for us.
Sounds good.
Okay, so you're seeing our first slide. Um, I'm Wayne Robertson with Northwest Leadership Associates. And uh, the other face on the screen that's not uh, currently associated with the Ferndale School District is Mark Van. And Mark and I will be the consultants if you choose Northwest Leadership Associates to do your search. Um, I'm going to take the first few slides talking about uh, the firm and Mark and myself and uh, set the stage a little bit. And then Mark is going to take the middle slides that have the most to do with the process. And then I'll come back on and um, and we'll finish up and we should have plenty of time for questions. So. Um, well, it's an honor to be here. Thank you uh, very much for the opportunity. We greatly appreciate it. We want to of course congratulate Linda on her retirement and uh, welcome Mark to the superintendent uh, arena. I know he's looking forward to that. I talked to him a little bit on Zoom the other day and uh, he's got lots of challenges, but he's got good background for it. So I think you're going to be fine. You're going to be well positioned to move forward and uh, and, and take the district to the next step. Um. Uh, we're honored to be here. Uh, just a little bit, the first slide obviously is just a welcoming slide. But uh, I would draw attention to the fact that those students are actually returning to school. We didn't have a slide where they're doing remote learning. So uh, we're, we're looking forward to all of our districts uh, that we work with. Having kids in uh, in market quarter buildings and, and getting back to as near normal as we possibly can. So we wish you luck with the end of the school year and uh, looking forward to the, to the start of school next year. And our mission, uh, some key words in that, it's probably pretty much like everybody's mission statement, but um, the word assist is very important. Uh, we see ourselves as facilitators. Uh, we don't direct the search. We work with the board. We support the board. Uh, we understand that even though we talk about the number of searches that we've done over the number of years and all of our associates and all of that, just like every other firm. Uh, there's only one search that you care about and that's the Ferndale School District search. We understand that and we work from that reference point. Um, so assist is very important. We consider ourselves facilitators. Give me just another minute on that, please, Kelly. You could. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, but we want you to know that even though our role is to facilitate and assist, uh, we're actively involved in the recruiting. We don't wait for people to come to us. We seek them out and uh, we will make uh, probably seventy or eighty personal contacts regarding your search. Um, as we, part of our recruiting process, we uh, handle the screening uh, a number of ways. And we share all the information that we have um, from our vetting and from our screening and um, every aspect of information that we can gather um, about all the candidates. And then we work with you on the final decision making, selecting, interviewing and deliberating processes uh, to make sure that you get the best search, that's the best fit for the Ferndale School District at this point in time. Okay, Kelly, thank you. All right. So a little bit about our firm. Uh, Northwest Leadership Associates, we've been around for over twenty years, uh, working, doing searches in the state of Washington. We have eleven uh, super, uh, former superintendents, um, all with Washington state experience that make up our network. So Mark and I will be the people that you will see day to day. But we have plenty of backup and we're, we cover the, the state. So um, there isn't, aren't too many in-state or former in-state superintendent or superintendent applicants that would come forward where we don't have an associate that's worked with them or know somebody that's worked with them or has experiences and connections with those districts. Extremely well uh, networked in the Northwest and that, that pays huge dividends um, for our searches. That doesn't mean we restrict the, the recruiting and the exposure of the search to the state of Washington. Um, but as you know, um, from seeing superintendents that are getting hired, uh, many superintendents in the state of Washington are from the state of Washington. Um, but there will be a nationwide effort um, to recruit. And you'll have out of state candidates that you can take a good look at. And uh, if that's the way you go, that's the way you go. Our cadre of eleven uh, experienced, the former superintendents over a hundred and fifty-five years of superintendent experience, mostly in the state of Washington, certainly. Um, we've done over three hundred searches in the past twenty years. Um, in a second, we'll talk about some regional searches that we've done. Uh, we've worked with small districts, large districts um, over fifth, under fifty and over twenty thousand. Um, and we would encourage you to contact your colleagues, your fellow board members in any of our uh, reference districts and uh, check out our work. Um, we don't restrict any of those, any of those calls and we would encourage you to do that. Um, most of our experience has been in, in the Northwest, hence our name, of course. Um, but we have done a bit of work in other states. Um, and again, the fact that we're headquartered in Washington doesn't mean you're not, you're doing, doesn't mean you're not doing a national search. All searches are national searches in this day and age. You couldn't do it any other way with the internet. Next slide, please, Kelly. A little bit about myself and a little bit about Mark. Um, I'm the former superintendent of Edmonds and Lakewood and Conway. Twenty-three years of superintendent experience, all in this ESD. Um, I was also director of special programs in the Lake Stevens School District. And um, currently work with Western Washington University, um, coordinating the um, superintendent certification program of which Ferndale is well represented and um, both in the past and in the present. And um, we're proud of that. And um, and then I'm, I'm involved um, in their new, newly developing doctoral program. So we're really looking forward to that. Great exciting time for Western Washington University. Mark is the former superintendent of the Seidra Woolley School District, also has experience in Watcom County as a, before he became a superintendent. And you may know him from his work with Educational Service District one eighty-nine. He currently is the president of the Board of Directors for the, the ESD. Um, very well connected in the region and uh, his other experiences around the state. And we don't go anywhere where somebody doesn't uh, recognize Mark and um, and celebrates the work that they've, they've done with him. So between the two of us, um, we're about as well connected with your district and other districts in uh, our ESD as any consultants you'll find. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to be in the team that comes forward and helps you find your next superintendent. Next slide, Kelly. So that's a list of our, um, our associates and you can see a couple of things. Dennis Ray is our CEO. Dennis was the former superintendent Walla Walla North Shore School District. He's kind of the dean of superintendent searches in the state of Washington. Um, and extremely well connected through uh, his work as a superintendent, his support for Wassa. When uh, he's done the searches for uh, Wassa, Wasta, um, all of the associations, WIAA. Uh, we recently added uh, Mr. Sergio Hernandez. Uh, Sergio is a former superintendent. Um, and that gives us a huge leg um, in terms of recruiting uh, the Latinx uh, potential applicants. And Sergio is a great asset to us and uh, we're really uh, for, looking forward to having him on board. As you can see, we're covering, we cover the state, a lot of experience um, and, and a very strong network that would support us in supporting you as you do your search. Excite, Kelly. So in the Northwest area, over the last six years, um, we've been very busy and you see many districts very similar to Ferndale. Um, that where we've done the searches, all of these searches except for Enamclaw. Mark Van and I were the lead consultants on. Um, Enamclaw, we, our firm did that search in two thousand and twenty. But Mark and I were um, associated with it, but we weren't the lead consultants. The rest of these, we were the lead consultants on. Uh, we would have thought that last year there would not have been as much activity in terms of superintendent searches. But it was a very busy year, probably our busiest year that we've had. And um, who's to say what next year's going to be like? Um, but we come to you with lots of uh, lots of horsepower from our firm and lots of experience, both in our ESD region and across the state of Washington. So Mark is going to take the next few slides and dig deeper into the process, what it would look like if you were to do um, a search with Northwest Leadership Associates as your consultant. Mark?
Thanks, Wayne. Good job. Um, I want to thank you too for uh, allowing us to be here tonight. It's uh, it's a privilege and an honor for us to be here with the school board, the students in particular, and, and the district office staff. I, like Wayne said, I, I've spent a good portion of my career in Watcom County and, and know the Ferndale District pretty well. Uh, we do have a board member in our ESD, Jack Thompson, who used to be the former superintendent at Ferndale too. So we're uh, pretty well connected with your community and we feel really good about your community and we think your job would be a highly sought after position in, not only in the state, but it would be outside the state as well. So one of our strengths is that we come in and we, we develop relationships. We personalize the superintendent's search. We develop relationships not only with you, the board, which is the main thing, but also with the administrator, made straight of team, with the teachers, with your classified staff and really importantly, we make connections with the community. So the process basically starts with an online, we conduct an online survey. Uh, and uh, we start that as soon as we can. And basically it's a way for your community to provide you as a board input into what they'd like to see uh, in the qualifications and characteristics and qualities of the next superintendent. Uh, we have the capacity to do it in bilingual as well, in Spanish as well as uh, we've done uh, Russian as well. Uh, we mainly do them, we've done them in English and Spanish mainly, but we have done uh, one in, in Russian as well. Uh, we also like to come into your district and spend probably a couple of days, this be in the fall. Uh, working with groups of people that would be identified by you as a board, but also working with your leadership team. And uh, we basically asked them three questions. What are some good things going on in your district? What are some challenges? And what are you looking for? What are the characteristics you're looking for? And once we put this together, and particularly the focus group piece, we work with the board to develop a leadership profile. And the leadership profile will be in the brochure that goes out to throughout the United States, goes out online, it goes into the uh, Wassa, Wasta, AWSP, our own website. It goes, can go on the AASA uh, website as well, if you choose to do that. Uh, but the key thing is that we want to get the brochure done, which talks about the strengths and characteristics because part of the application process revolves around the brochure. So it says in the last bullet that we actively recruit candidates for each position based on the profile. We are aggressive recruiters. So if you're looking for a firm that's going to sit back and wait for people to come to them and uh, show up just because Ferndale's a great place. Uh, we may not be the guys because we really do, we have a listserv of a group of probably about sixty people right now that we know may have an interest or would have an interest in your job. And we actively recruit people, personally recruit people and reach out to people in um, in a pretty aggressive way to get a pool. And we've had really, you think during the uh, the COVID uh, piece we're going through, you think that the pools would not be very deep. Our pools have been very deep this year, uh, particularly in school districts the size of Ferndale. We've had anywhere from high twenties to thirties uh, in the number of applicants. Next slide, please, Kelly. Skip one, go back one, please. Okay, there we go. So uh, as we go through and we get applications in, uh, we do reference checks, we vet out candidates. We go deeper uh, than, than just the what's uh, the application or the resume uh, may say. And uh, we, like Wayne talked about earlier, we have a strong network of people that we know that in school districts in the state, outside the state, that provide us with information we can share with the board. And we do that in the screening report. And we do that in the screening report to the board. And basically, the board moves ahead. This is at the end. The board moves ahead and decides who they want to move forward. And be involved in the preliminary interviews, which is usually five or six candidates. From there, we facilitate the interview process with the board. We want to make sure there's appropriate community and staff involvement. This year, a lot of our searches have been via Zoom. But with some districts towards the end of the school year, we've seen more and more in person. Which we expect next year, especially after June thirtieth with the governor's announcement. We'll be able to open things up a little bit and get more people involved, person to person, rather than on the Zoom. We've seen a lot of advantages to Zoom though. We've had a lot of input for boards to look at and a lot of community involvement that normally we wouldn't get. So we want to work with you to decide basically, do you want to do a hybrid model? Do we want to go straight forward with just in person? I, we think very highly of the Zoom as far as getting people involved. We also help with contract negotiations and basically we have that taken care of for you before you make your final decision with the, with the candidate, is who you're going to choose. We've already made those. And we also do a third party background check for each of the final three that you move forward. And we follow up with communication with the unsuccessful candidates as well. In the final interviews, you usually bring three forward and each of the three spends a day in the district. After that's done, we, and they meet different groups. After that's done, the board makes a decision through consensus, not through voting. The only voting you do is when you actively announce who you've chosen. Last one, Kelly, for me. So here's our flow chart that we have, and I, I hope you can read it. It's, the font's kind of small, but basically if we're selected, we will meet you with you in the fall, probably in September to approve a search plan and timeline. We'll put together a draft and we'll put together a plan. But basically, it's for us to work with you to decide what that looks like. We will start probably pretty early, probably after school begins, probably September, early October with an online survey. And come in and spend a couple of days getting focus groups report. We also do a report to the board and they use, you use that to make a brochure. So once the board approves the job posting and the recruitment begins, we're up and running. And basically, the board's work is in the front to get the brochure down and to get the characteristics and qualifications. And then at the end, and in between, it's Wayne and I work to do. At the midpoint, we do a mid-search review meeting with the board. All candidates' names are kept confidential. All applicants come to, applications come to Northwest Leadership, Wayne and myself. But we do a very objective report mid-search and tell you how many people have applied, how many are male and female, how many have their doctorate, how many are current suits. The board likes to get an idea about the midpoint, what things look like. So one of the things that we do early on, when we set our search plan and timeline, is set an application deadline. And we would assume that would probably be somewhere around late January, February, somewhere in there. And then the board and Wayne and I would work together to get the application deadline. Then we do a screening report and we want to do this in person if we can with the board to review the candidates. The candidates and their applications the board can look at ahead of time. We'll do a, we use what most experts call a lockbox for the board. And the board can view them and take a look at the candidates' applications and profiles prior to that. That leads us to the preliminary interviews. We usually do those on a Saturday, but we're open to be inflexible on that. But it's just Saturday with five to six fifty-minute interviews. And then the board goes from there to the final interviews. They usually move out of the six, but three forward. And those three spend a day in the district. The district will look really a lot like how you want it to. They'll meet with different groups, maybe the community in the final meetings with the board. We do final background checks and contract negotiations so the board is not, doesn't have to be involved in that. That can get kind of sticky, we take care of that. And then the board will select the new superintendent, usually after the last of the final interviews. And then the new superintendent will assume their position July first. So that's a quick review of how we work. I think you might have some questions go along, but that's a flow chart of what it looks like with the search. Our search has been very successful. There's always some drama, I have to tell you that at the end. But that's just the nature of the beast and we would really look forward to working with you. So I'll leave it to you, Wayne, to go from here.
Thank you. I think the other thing, that, that's a process that we've used most often. Sometimes there's a little variation of it. But usually with the smaller districts that might only want one round of interviews. With districts the size and complexity of Ferndale, this process is time-tested and it works. One of the things that we say, as people are getting nervous with something that they're wondering about, trust the process. If they trust the process and we follow the plan, at the end of the day, you'll have several strong candidates to select from. And you'll have a strong candidate to take your district forward. Just a little summary of our strengths. We talked a little bit about our network of consultants. I can't overemphasize that. Mark and I have a lot of help and it really helps us with reference checking. Many of these applicants are applying in multiple jobs. And so we're, we're aware of where they're applying and what they're doing, how they're doing. And that's all good information. That information can, can come together and, and benefit your search. The process works. One of the ways that it works is it involves all your stakeholders. You tell us who the key stakeholders are and we have a place for them in the process. So that the end of the day, they may not get the person that they picked. But they'll say, I had a voice in that process and I understand. You know, the process was transparent, was open, was above board, so let's get on with it. And the involvement of all those stakeholders brings a new superintendent to the district with a lot of people that will support that person's transition and entry into the district. And that benefits the, the district. Mark mentioned our recruitment and aggressive, multiple calls. Sometime, you know, they say that salesmanship begins when the customer says no. We've had multiple times where candidates have said, oh, I don't think so, this is not the right time for me. And, and we'll come back around again and say, you thought about that a little more? And very often, they'll say, you know, maybe so. And then they'll, they'll take a run at it. So we, we work that hard, both with people we know and people we've yet to know. And we'll do a good job for you in that area. Integrity is key to your work and it's key to our work. Confidentiality, following through on what we say. Responsibility, access, all of those are signature to our search. We want to make sure that the board knows we're representing them. And we want to make sure that the candidates know that we work for the board. But we want the candidates treated fairly and with respect. That's particularly important with internal candidates, but it's very important with, with all candidates. We want candidates to know if they didn't get this job, maybe why? Give them some constructive feedback. We've had candidates be applicants for positions in our searches multiple times, two, three and four. And on more than one occasion, they've risen, risen to the top in a subsequent search. And we think that's a, that's a good thing. We talked about our network, it's regional, it's national. We rely on that heavily. We have a strong track record of success in districts just like Ferndale. And there's no reason that we wouldn't be successful in doing the search for Ferndale. Mark said, this is a very attractive job and there's going to be a lot of interest. And we want to bring those, the best candidates forward. We take pride in our work and we care about our school districts. We're pretty well known in this region and we have a lot of friends and a lot of colleagues. And we're not going to let anybody down on our watch. And that's, that's, you can take that to the bank. Next slide, please, Kelly. So what if something goes sideways? You know, there's a lot of variables to school district work, not counting pandemics. But if by any chance a candidate leaves or is terminated during the first two years of their employment. We conduct a second search for no additional fee other than a little bit of mileage. And Mark lives in Seadrill Woolley and I live in Marysville, so that's pretty insignificant. We haven't had to do that and we don't plan on starting to do that with Ferndale. But it's there and we'd stand behind it if, if it came to that. Okay, so I think the last two slides are, oh, I'm sorry. Kipping over an important one. So just further summary, reasons to select us. Efficiency, we want to, we want to make the best use of your time and staff time. We want to do the work that you need us to do and we want you involved when you need to be there. Things like interviewing, deliberations over the candidates with the information we present to you. And representing your community and the, the public aspects of it. And we do the, we do the rest for pretty much. Confidentiality is extremely important. We let the candidates know that their name does not become public until they're a semifinalist. And at that point, typically, the interviews are conducted in a public setting. So the candidates understand that their names have to be public. But if they apply and they're not selected by you for an interview, then that's just between us and them and, and you, of course. So that gives them some confidence in the process and enables them to step forward, maybe if they're a little, a little nervous about that. We actively recruit, as Mark said, we don't just wait for people to come to us and we get going on that right away. Typically, we'll have people ahead of an announcement. They'll say, if you get the Ferndale search or if you get the Seadrill Woolley search, I'd be interested now, so keep me in mind. And then we follow up on all of those. Communication is extremely important. We work extensively, mostly through the board president, but not necessarily. However, you want to assign that communication channel. We work extensively with the executive assistants and, and work on the details. We're always available. We share our cell phone numbers, our email addresses with you and with your staff. And we want to be available to everybody. If there's somebody that comes forward in a focus group and said, I wasn't comfortable about speaking out in that group. But I'd like to talk to the consultants, they have access to us. So we'll be as available and over-communicating to the extent that you need us to. That's the key to a successful process. And we think information is power. We wanted to share with you the information we have, particularly about the candidates. And we need from you information about the district, about your community, about the board's direction. And, and we want to bring all that together and move forward through the process that'll get you the best possible superintendent. And let's take our reputation on our ability to do that. Okay, now Kelly, next slide, thank you. Well, I think the last little bit, our resumes, we're not going to read our resumes to you. But you have them available and you can see there's a lot of experience there, both that the, we've moved through, we've both moved through all the chairs in multiple settings and covered all the bases in terms of our development. And this is kind of a way of us continuing. I saw, I think, one of your board members is failing a retirement, I think. And Mark and I are both in that same college. We go to that same school. Though we're working on it and we'll get there someday, but in the meantime, we, this is a way we can give back and stay engaged. And, and contribute to communities that have helped, that have helped us along the way. I think that's it, that's probably enough from us at this point, and we'd be happy to entertain questions.
All right, thank you. Great presentation, so I'll open it up for questions from the board and admin team.
So the question I've asked the other two search firms has to do with deciding on the compensation package. And how you go about helping us do that? Because we know that the superintendent's salary is often a big topic of conversation in a community. So how do you help us come to that decision on what that compensation package looks like? And what additional items would be in there?
But I'll take this one, Mark, and then we'll just trade off, we'll just trade off. I, I noticed on your district website, you had some Q and A about superintendent compensation. So that kind of gave me a heads up that it's an issue. We've got a pretty good process on this. And what, what we do on the front end is do a market analysis and ask you about, would you like us to do that? And typically, boards would appreciate the information. Sometimes the business office wants to do that and that's fine with us. But we want you to know what the comparable districts are paying their, their superintendents. How much experience those superintendents might have, any other aspects that might influence the contract. And then once we get a salary range from you. That's a number that we share with the candidates when they're applying. So we start out except, setting the expectations for the applicant. That if you're, move forward through this process, you can expect to be the compensation to be somewhere in this neighborhood. And then we suggest that you work with us and your attorney on the actual terms of the contract. And your question is very well founded. Very often, there's, there are other terms, it's not just base salary. There's other aspects of the salary that, that make up the total compensation. So we want to spend as much time with you as, as you need us to, to get that to where you're comfortable with what the, the contract should be. And then we like to have that done before the semifinalists come into the district or zoom into the district for the interview. And then we like to share a draft of that contract with them. And we basically say, we've done it a market, a market analysis, the board has worked on this. We think this is a fair salary for this position at this time. And if you're moving forward through the process, meaning the candidate, is this acceptable to you? And they generally say, yes, it is, because they want to move through the, forward through the process. And it is acceptable because we've done the homework and you've done the homework to get it where it needs to be. So then at the end of the day, when you're ready to select your finalist, that finalist knows what the compensation package is. And there's no negotiations, it, it's already done. And so there's no slippage, no surprises. We've, we've talked with them multiple times. We have about four points along the way where we talk with them about compensation to set that number in their mind and talk about the terms. And then if there's something that's out of the ordinary, we'll process it with them a little bit. But basically, what you want the contract to be is what we take to the candidates and that'll be the contract. We haven't had any issues with that along the way, number of times when we've done it.
One thing, does that help? Go ahead, Mark. One, one other thing, Leanne, is, is that we really believe the simpler the better. When you're starting out with a contract with the new superintendent. It, it's easier to build on to that as a board down the road and start off with really a, a, a very simple contract with a base salary and work from there. Later on, as you know, and, and I know you've worked with Linda on this, is that, you know, there's ways you can add on to that salary without adding on to the base. But we really recommend to keep it simple for, for the board's sake. For the sale to the community, but also for the candidates. So as a candidate comes in, basically what, there's, there's nothing in there that is not straightforward and, and to the point and, and easy for us to sell to the candidate and easy for the board to understand.
We, we don't want the first or a first conversation between you and your new superintendent to be negotiating a salary. We'd like to have you talking about transition and entry plans and relationships and everything else that you need to talk about. Have that set aside and then you can pick that up down the road, the second, third years of the contract. Does that help?
Thank you.
So this is Andrew. How do you ensure that we get a diverse group of candidates?
You want to take that, Mark?
Sure. Well, we, we, not, not only do we have a diverse group of ex-supperintendents we work with. But we, we recruit in areas that where diverse candidates work right now. We probably in our searches would, would get twenty-five to thirty percent diversity. We probably, in our searches, would get 25 to 30% diversity in our applicants. We go with the direction of the board and some boards are very adamant that we do need diverse candidates. One example was La Conner recently. They have two Native Americans on their school board and we were able to find a Native American candidate that ended up getting the job, actually. But we have connections to communities. We have a listserv, like I said before. There's diversity out there and I'm not just talking about racial diversity, but I'm also talking about identity diversity. I'm talking about gender diversity. If you set that as a priority, we have references and connections in different parts of the state, in different parts of the country, for people of color, for minorities. And we can assure you that we will bring forward to you people that are not the white Anglo-Saxon, all-white Anglo-Saxon male candidates. Very little of our application pools now, very little. About half of our pools are male, white males and the rest are usually female and people of color and people of different persuasions.
I have a question. Given that you are local to Washington State and this year is going to be a busy year with about a third of the ESD superintendents retiring this year or last, will that spread your team thin with 11 consultants? I mean, how are you going to manage this busy year? And how would it impact the Ferndale School District search?
We feel we have. Last year, Mark and I did six searches and we were kind of going forward next year saying, we're only going to do three or four. We know that we have the capacity to do more searches, but it's just kind of a workload and quality and quality of life kind of issue. Our 11 consultants, they vary as to how much work they're doing and where they're involved. We're not concerned about the two of us being spread too thin in order to take on your search. We've thought about that, talked about it. We know that we have the capacity to do it.
And you're in charge of how many searches you guys will take on as a team?
As a Northwest Leadership Team.
The two of you have decided that three or four is good for you. What if somebody else decides, no, five or six is good for you?
No, they don't get to decide. I hadn't thought about the question from that perspective. No, that's not an option.
No, we pretty much call our own shots with a lot of this. We work under that umbrella of Northwest Leadership, but we make the calls with that. You know, being on the ESD board, we've seen tremendous turnover this year on our superintendents and, you know, including Linda next year, of course, and then some others going on next year. But, you know, I think we had a meeting the other day, I think we have 13 new superintendents in our ESD out of 35 school districts. That's a huge turnover. The reality is, you know, we could have probably done 10 searches this year, but there's limits to what we want to do from, I think, to do a quality job and to make sure we're doing the best we can for the districts we serve. Like I said at the very start, we personally get involved with school districts and get to know districts very well. And to do that, it takes a lot of time and energy and effort on our part. And we're willing, you know, we want to do that with Ferndale. We think that that would be, your search would be a fun search, be fun to get to know your community and whoever you hire, you're going to get a good candidate. And you've got to remember, you only need one. So if we're chosen, we're going to find you a good candidate and it's going to be well within our capacity to do your search and do it right.
Thank you.
So the benefit of being local is you know more people. And I get the impression when we're going through, you know some of the folks within the room. How, with that knowledge, do you maintain objectivity when you're presenting candidates, evaluating candidates?
We share information with the board. And if there's a, like, for example, if an applicant is a student of Western Washington University's program, I make sure that Mark does the vetting on that candidate, so I'm at least a little bit removed from the process. We work on that very carefully. But at the end of the day, we're just sharing information with the board and the board is making determinations as to who the candidates are that move forward. We have, on some occasions, candidates that I'm connected to move forward through the process and sometimes they don't. And that's, objectivity has not been an issue. We have people that we've worked with in other districts that move through the system. It hasn't been a problem. We know our role and we know how to stay in our lane.
I think I would say we kind of go overboard and that may be a little bit too much sometimes. But we totally try to balance that out between Wayne and I as to who we know and who we've worked with and all that. Sometimes boards will ask us when we do the screening process, would you rate the candidates? And we usually go three categories, A, B, and C. But it's the board's call. It is, we objectively present them to the board and it's your call. We can be a guide on the side throughout that process, which is what we're going to try to do. And we can give you advice. Some boards want us to, you know, make recommendations. Other boards do it totally on their own. It's totally up to you. But we totally want to guarantee that we'll remain objective. You know, yeah, we do know a lot of people. You know, that's our strength. We do know a lot of people and we know a lot of people that would be interested in your position. And so it's, we challenge ourselves to be objective and we are.
Thank you.
I assume you could help us develop like a rubric or something for scoring applicants ourselves? Like if we were to look at a large group of applicants, so the board can narrow it down? Or how does that work?
We've done, you know, typically, the rubric will be pretty straightforward. It kind of comes off of the leadership profile that you develop. So you've got superintendent experience, you know, maybe you want somebody bilingual. You know, you get points for different kind of characteristics. It's really not hard to develop something like that. Usually, at the end of the day, it winds up being fairly subjective judgment call. You'll probably have 25, 30 applicants for your position. So you're right, the numbers get pretty big. Reality is, a third of them drop off pretty fast. You have a couple, three, that are really high flyers that kind of everybody has as their first or second choice. And then you're talking about a handful of people that are kind of in the middle and you're really splitting hairs as to who you like the best and who you want to move forward through the process. But if the board, you know, is inclined to want some kind of structure to that process, we can work with, you know, maybe somebody in your HR department or maybe a board member and kind of draft out that. We help out with interview questions. We do, you know, whatever you need us to do.
Yeah, we have models that we can provide you to take a look at that other boards have used. We do that with the scoring rubric. Most boards will do one of two things. Either they'll say, okay, Wayne, you and Mark go through and vet out the candidates and go through the applications and you give us basically your groups, different groups of what you think. And then we'll discuss that later. And other boards will read every applicant of all 25, 30 people and they'll go through that and rank themselves and then come together and collaborate together. So it certainly depends on what you want to do. But we have a lot of samples that we share with you, from the rubric to the questions that you're going to ask in the preliminary interviews, to what the day looks like when the candidate's in your district, to the statement you make when you go in public with who you've chosen, to your letter of intent. We have all that for you to take a look at and to use as a school district.
With the information that we have on the candidates, would you share with us, and I assume you would, if they're contenders for other districts as well?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't catch that question.
Would we share information if, say, a candidate was an applicant for another job? Yes, we would. We were very transparent. I think the word we haven't used enough that we often do is transparency. But with the board, we would certainly let you know if they're a finalist or if they've been a finalist in previous positions. So say you have a candidate that was a finalist that Stan would, just a recent search. We feel it's important that you know that. I mean, it can be seen positively or negatively, but I think it's important. We think it's important that we're very transparent with you as a board and share these with you.
We've had a number of occasions where we're able to talk about the candidate where we've seen them interviewed before and how they interviewed and what their strengths are and, you know, any of that information. That's all, it's an executive session when we're sharing it. It's all related to personnel qualifications. So, yeah, we share the information that we have.
Of the three proposals that we've heard tonight, yours finishes the last. You have it finishing in March, where the others have it finishing in January or February. What do you see as the advantage of that, especially in a competitive market?
I'll take that, Mark.
Sure, I think if you look at your timeline, that's, first of all, that's just a draft that was put forward by Dennis Ray. But, you know, we certainly can finish earlier if you want. But you try to get in what we call the sweet spot. If you get out too early, you're going to have people that are indecisive and not really thinking about, do they want to be a superintendent in the Ferndale School District? So you got to find that sweet spot. And it usually means that you post it probably in November. You give people a chance to think about it over the winter break. And then after the first of the year, then you really pursue people and work hard. And that's when you get the majority of your applications come in. I don't think it would diminish your pool at all. I think you're going to have a good pool no matter when it is. But we certainly can move that timeline forward and go forward, you know, and have it finishing, I think I mentioned earlier, in late January or February and have a superintendent for you in February. I don't think there's a big advantage to one way or the other. I think your district's going to sell itself, I really do. And I think the fact that you'll have a superintendent in there to work with Mark and the rest of the staff, you know, whether it's three months out or four months out, just the fact that you have time to do that, I think is really important. You got to remember, most of the people that are going to be applying already have jobs. So they're going to have to work that out as to how they're going to be able to spend time in your district. But it's negotiable. We're not set on that. That's a draft and we certainly, if you choose, we can move it forward. We just think right now, what we propose puts you really in the sweet spot for candidates.
Sometimes you'll get a candidate that doesn't, might have a levy election in February and they don't want to be going public with the fact that they're applying, you know, right around that timeframe. The winter break is a good time for people to talk things over with their family and decide if something's going to be in all of everybody's best interest for them to apply. So we think the closing date after the first of the year works out pretty well for that. If you get out too early, people aren't ready and they don't want to be, you know, they don't want to be public for any longer than they have to be public. So we think, just everything Mark said, that timeline's pretty good. Moving in a couple of weeks is not a big deal, though. If you wanted to be slightly sooner, we can make adjustments to that proposed timeline.
When it comes to focus groups, have you done them in multiple languages?
Yes, we have. We've done, in some districts, one district, we did it in three different languages, but counting English. But yes, we do. We can and we do. And we have a colleague that we could bring in to work with your Latinx population, Hispanic-speaking population as well. And certainly, yeah, it's doable and we've done it before. The online surveys, we put those in different languages as well, like I said earlier. So, yeah, we certainly can conduct the focus groups with your different language groups in your community. And I know you have a large Hispanic population, but I think at one time you had a pretty good size Russian Ukrainian population too. I'm not sure, but still that way or not.
We would work with your staff, you know, who have connections with those families and be available for whatever they thought was the best way to do it. That would be inclusive and honor the participation of those groups.
Thank you.
All right, well, great presentation. We really appreciate your time. We'll be discussing the presentations tonight. We may yet come to a decision, but as soon as we do, we'll let you know.
Okay, well, good. Thank you again for having us here and we're very appreciative of the fact you're taking your time tonight to do this and to process through this. As you know, school board, this is the most important decision you make is hiring a superintendent. But one of the other important things is you've got to hire some people to help you and work with you that you think you can work with and that you want to work with. And, you know, we would again look forward to working with you and we think we can make a good team with you and certainly move your district forward and get a really, really good superintendent for the next year in 2022. Wayne?
No, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And you can, when you make a decision, you can contact either of us. If you have our contact information of our resumes and our proposal or Kelly has them on our email information. So we look forward to hearing from you either way and wish you the best of luck with your search. Pretty much.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, so we'll take a break or is everybody good? Hold your hand.
We'll take a few minutes, five minutes first.
Five-minute break.
Five minute break.
Let's reconvene. All right. So we've heard from the three, I mean, three, we've heard of three presentations. So now we can discuss the pros and cons. We can entertain a motion later on after the discussion. We can delay that discussion or delay that decision. It's up to us. And so I'll open the floor up to anyone's observations or comments.
Did either of you guys call any of the districts that any of these groups have worked with? Or you just presented us with the habits?
We did not. We have not done any reference checks. Happy to do that if that's a direction the board wants to go first. So.
I think that's the one thing. I mean, I, I have a sense of who I would be leaning towards. But that's the one thing that was keeping from that final decision tonight. That's a good point.
Okay. Do you want to have a discussion in general? I mean, I don't know if we, is, is there a presentation or group that? Probably not. Do you want references on all three?
I, I would say from a personal, from a personal point, the first presentation was well done and everything else. But I like the fact that both the other groups have a local connection. And so in my mind, the first group is my distant third.
And I felt like the last group showed more of an effort to know what our district is like. And really seemed to know what our population makeup was a little bit more and, and I.
I, I like the first presentation. Unfortunately, he riffed on our population. He just, he didn't even acknowledge that we have the Lummy Tribe here. And our relationship with the Lummy Nation. And so I felt like that was something that struck me that he hadn't done his homework. But as a presentation, I thought they did a really good job. They had obviously done a lot of homework. It's just they missed some key points. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I thought they, the first one did very well with the presentation. I thought the second one was really good, but then we got to the third one and I thought they were better. I don't know what capacity he's worked with, with the school district, but they sound like Ferndale was familiar. And that's, I wrote it, took notes, a lot of notes come back on too. Because they're local, as they know, local, their prices would be, costs would be down too. We're not having to buy tickets to go for them to come here or whatever.
But it's, it sounded like to me that they would all be advertising in the same types of terminals and places. So from the standpoint of getting people from all over the place, probably any, any other firms are going to have the same kind of availability. Maybe the first one has more of a network nationally, but. The processes to advertise are, are sort of finite.
Yeah. The processes, you know, skew a few dates, skew a little bit, seemed pretty similar between all three groups. You know, and the first presentation, the gentleman said, you know, you're going to hear similar things. You need to find a group that you can work with, that you feel comfortable working with. And, and I think, you know, going into it after reading the resumes a couple of times or their presentations a couple of times. I came into it thinking that one group was going to be my top choice. But after seeing the presentations flipped in who I, you know, have as my top in my mind at this point. Just because I thought that the interaction or just the comfort level that had working with them that I got just in the presentation was better.
First thing, I felt like the second one was kind of winging it. Much effort put into impressing us with the presentation that was more. I've got some time. Let's, let's look at a couple of pages of what we've already sent you. I'll summarize the best section. So I was disappointed with that.
Tell us why. Okay, I've got a meeting, but.
I, I have to, I just have to weigh in on one thing. Having the search completed in November is not how things happen in this state.
It, it feels really early.
And I, I do not think that a superintendent wants to be named to a new job and be a lame duck from November on. And I, I cannot remember the last time unless it was an internal, someone moving up that they ever named. I don't think you, I really don't think you're going to get the best candidates if you go that early.
I thought his, the last answer to, you know, with the levies and being cognizant of if they're moving from one district to another is like, yeah, you totally don't want to shoot another district in the foot by doing that. So you have knowledge of Washington State as a whole.
Kevin and I came in thinking, from reading these, I came in with one that I thought I was going to like the most. And I have since changed my mind and it was that kind of comfort level and steadiness I felt with this last group. That they're just not as worried of this group like. But I felt like they were just as open and they would be open to some of the details that were here. That they would incorporate if we asked for it. So these guys are definitely my pick. But I guess I would like some references called.
I can certainly call. I, I guess what I think is. If I call the district, they tell me to call, they're all going to have great references. So I'm really not sure what we would glean from that. I, I do know that due diligence suggests we need to do references. But I also think.
Well, they did have quite a few different districts on that one slide where they had four last year and three the year before and two. I mean, there's, so maybe don't ask them which ones to call and, because it was, you know, two all set in a cloth.
I think you should call board members. I can tell you I've known both of those men for over twenty years. So I can give you a personal reference. I know them well. And they're good guys.
Well, I think certainly I'd call some board.
John, John's worry is if we're going to get in the competition, if they're going to handle Linden. No, I mean.
That was kind of my question when you're spreading thin. I was like, is that conflict of interest or what is it?
Although Linden has been done, they did McPherson and, yeah, they're on our list. Yeah. So.
It's the same question, I guess. If you're, if you're going with a local group and a lot of local districts are going, what makes us the priority? Among those, we want somebody that's devoted to us.
And for the McPhersons, you know, they, they listed all of these search firms. I mean, searches that they had completed. When I looked through the dates of those, there were only two or three that are very recent. And it doesn't suggest that the one they did in two thousand eight is still there necessarily. I didn't read it that way. But that they did a search in two thousand eight, but yet there's only one or two that are two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, even two thousand nineteen. And it made you wonder.
I wonder when this was updated.
Well, again, we can only go off what we have.
Well, I'm wondering when he last read it.
I, I did like the fact that he was a former board member. I thought having a board member and a superintendent on a search team makes a lot of sense.
It does. I, I did like that.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there are not any recent.
So those are like all the Washington ones that they've done out of the eight hundred searches they've done in the past one year or so.
And unless all those people are still in their districts, then it's, it's, there aren't many for the last four years.
Yeah, but Shelton is.
Because otherwise they've got a hundred percent stay rate.
Okay, so I can tell you that if they did Arlington in two thousand seven, eight. Arlington did another search in about eleven, twelve and then it must not have been used. Yeah, because my friend got hired there in eleven.
Yes.
I'll see what, what other ones I know. If they had, if Bellemeun eleven, twelve, there's been a new superintendent in Bellemeun in about sixteen or seventeen. So.
Well, the, I guess the other thing I look at in the sense of the presentations, the, the. The, the folks that we hire are going to be going forward, conducting these search groups. They're going to be working with the focus groups and what have you. They're going to represent us. And I'm looking, you know, if we take presentation one out of the picture, if we take second presentation from McPherson. Is that the gentleman and kind of the winged approach that we want to be representing our search? Or do you want the Northwest group that seem to come across in my mind as a little more finished? A little more, a little more polished, you know, just as far as what impression it's going to give to the public as to, you know, representing what level of search we're doing.
And we got to see both of them.
Yeah.
The other two search groups, we didn't see both.
Yeah.
I liked the way that both of them would receive a question and answer it too. I kind of felt that there was a little bit with the second one, when they were talking about what school board members were on when the last one came and we said, oh, Leanne was, and you said, oh, Leanne, you may have been there too. And it was like, no, she was there.
She was the one that knew what was going on.
So this is that sort of thing, I think, when dealing and facilitating meetings with the public. I really liked the way that last guys did it.
They were also more positive in their approach where the, the middle one had some negative twist. But he said that I thought, oh, don't say it that way.
Yeah.
So they did not pay for them. They didn't get not paid for this stuff. I'm going through their, most of the ones that they did, they didn't, that they listed here, I must have just haven't updated it. They didn't do the.
Second search.
The next one.
Jesse, what are you thinking?
I'm, I'm, I'm absorbing everything. I'm still learning. But I like the fact that this last group we had, they're local, right? So they knew this around me. They talked about people they knew. They, they talked about La Conna. La Conna school is a lot like Ferndale with La Conna Reservation, just like this women's reservation right there. And they recruited. Yeah, and they had two members on their board that were native. So that was a plus and.
And the other thing they said was communication was a key. And remember, we talk about that kids and even myself, that we don't really talk. And they're really shy, or they seem shy, but that's cultural. And so he said he would talk to those shy members or whatever, and take time to talk to them. I like that, you know, understanding that cultural difference makes a big difference.
I really appreciated that statement when they said if they're not comfortable talking in a focus group, that they would work with them. Well, I don't, I guess, I don't, I might resent what I said, because we all seem to start to be on the same page. If calling a couple of school board members makes sense, just to get.
I, I think it does.
Yeah, that's good due diligence.
And then calling, and then letting Andrew and John can let you guys know. And we do that a lot of times with hiring, we say this is our candidate, but we need to, we need to vet them.
Linda, do you know, if you could look at, for the Northwest leadership, a district that did use them, but then had to do another search and didn't choose them, and why they wouldn't have chosen them?
Well, I can look at it and see if I reckon, I'm just going by what I know.
Yeah, I didn't see if they had, I think they're listed in here, but if they don't, then they're.
Is there a way, I mean, given?
On, on the board docs, it's in that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I'm just confused.
If we're all leaning that direction, is there a way that if we do the references and they're positive, we could make the decision before our next meeting? Just, I mean, I don't know how competitive.
I think you can make the decision pending good references.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good idea.
And then that would allow them to go ahead.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you could wait till June 29th, and it is probably going to make a.
It just seems like waiting, it'd be nice to get.
Yeah, yeah.
Get on their list to make, get them locked in, because if they're on.
Let other districts know each other.
Yeah, well, just in case they've got other districts that are competing, we don't want to be, oh, we're sorry, we've got our three. Oh, well, yeah, guess we'll go with our second choice.
And so they do have a few districts listed here, but they have more listed on the power. Mount Baker being one of them.
Did they do Mount Baker in a few couple of years ago?
2018.
So, yeah, that was Mary.
Well, that'd be interesting to talk to them, because they would know between.
Well, you could call Russ.
Yeah, Russ would, Russ would help me.
I don't have Russ's number, but he provided to me after the call. I could call him tomorrow, I've got time tomorrow.
We'll find him, it's Russ, he's on the school board in Mount Baker, we'll find his number tomorrow.
It's probably on their website.
I'm sure it is.
It was yours.
Russ Piper.
He can tell you.
Russ, Russ Piper Hoyt.
Yeah, because he, he would have been there with both.
Yeah, he's been there a long time.
Yeah.
What else, who else did they mention in there that they've done recently?
Was it La Conna?
Oh, let's see. They did Arlington. If I didn't know the person who got it, I wouldn't know how the search firm.
You want the number? 360.
I break his name.
Oh, who is this?
This is Russ.
Russ Piper Hoyt, 360, 595.
360, 595, 2512.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. I also had it on.
Russ's group used this firm.
To hire Mary.
Hire Mary.
Their current superintendent.
Their current superintendent. Remember when I was Mary's mentor, just a few years ago. And I actually talked to her.
Are there specific questions that you would like me to ask?
That one before that was a no brainer, if it was the one right before.
It was a no brainer.
Really happened in there.
11, 12, 18.
Are there specific questions that you would like me to ask Russ? Other than how do they go into, how inclusive were they in the community?
Were they willing to tailor the, you know, did they, did they, did they?
Were the important things that they asked for, were those followed through with?
9 o'clock, I guess it's too late. I mean, I'm serious, I could, I could call and talk to him briefly, and then we could.
Well, it is light outside, we are in.
It's just.
Lynn also said we should approve pending positive references, which you could call a couple of board members. I could call the district out and see what their experience was like, and we put our heads back together tomorrow.
That's fine.
I'm, I'm good.
I would say entertain a motion, if there is one.
That we move forward with. Move forward with contracting with Northwest Leadership Associates pending positive reference checks in our process of hiring a new superintendent.
All right, it has been moved that we move ahead with hiring Northwest Leadership Associates pending positive references and responses from, you didn't say that, positive references. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Oh, there's a ton here. They, they hired Ishan, I mean, they did Ishan, Mount Vernon. They did see the Seadro Willie one this year, they did La Conner this year, they did Stanley, they just finished Stanley with Cameno. But.
Do you have a board member from Stanley?
Well, this is either your region, who do you know from Mount Vernon or Seadro? They did Anacortes.
I can call the district offices and ask.
You can go on their website.
And they did do, yeah, they did Arlington, they did.
Mark can probably do it.
They did La Conner twice, La Conner.
Well, I'll, I'll call La Conner, because they've done it twice, and ask them just what drove them to, to make that decision. And then I'll call Russ, and.
I would say Mount Vernon, somebody in Mount Vernon. David, do you know anybody on the board there?
Yeah, I do.
David, that's where David's going.
So I'll call Russ, where is Russ?
Mount Baker.
Mount Baker.
And he'll give you a candid opinion.
All right, Mount Baker, La Conner, and Mount Vernon.
Yeah, I think that would be good, that would be good. Thank you, Ann.
I'll take care of that. All right, well, we have reached the end of our agenda. It's great to have this almost finished, and I will give you an update tomorrow.
We haven't hired a superintendent.
We're like three quarters of the way there.
It starts with the first step.
Don't rain on our parade.
So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.